Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, March 26th, 2015. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start the meeting off with approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes of March 12th, 2015, and acceptance of warrants 39V-15 and 38P-15.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi Vanessa.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Long time no see.
I know.
So recent, this past month, we had our preliminaries and semifinals for the Drama Fest, where we went, our drama club went and competed, and we made it to the semifinal round, which is awesome. And then, one, our director, which was Ally Arnold, she's actually got an award for her playwright, and it's gonna be like, um, it'll be like, my goodness, I can't think of my words right now. But, we're gonna go to the finals, they'll perform 10 minutes of it, for everyone else to see it, and she's gotten an award for it, so that's awesome.
Wow.
Also, sports have totally started this past week. I know the girls lacrosse just recently had their first scrimmage against Haverhill High School, and they won, so that was awesome.
And are they practicing inside?
I know baseball's inside, but lacrosse has been in the senior parking lot.
They've been parking in the park.
So we have to move our cars at 2:45. But, also, we had a little fundraiser for the senior celebration yesterday, it was the hypnotist show, so that was a big hit.
Yeah.
I actually got hypnotized myself, so that was good.
That was so much fun.
Did you really, like, did you believe it?
Yeah. I was very relaxed, and it's like the power of suggestion, basically.
You were terrific.
Thank you.
Did you go?
There's nothing you weren't embarrassed about.
And they told the audience afterwards, you can say, "You were terrific," and then afterwards you say,
Thanks, I know.
Thanks, I know. And it was working, it was really fun, exciting show.
That's so fun. That was an awesome turnout for everyone, so we're looking forward to that.
I wonder if that was the same magician that...
It's been the same one for the past 12 or 18 years.
And he's been doing this for 27 years.
Cause the DECA, when I went to the DECA districts, they had a comedian slash hypnotist, who was really great with the kids.
Yeah.
I wonder if it was the same guy?
Steve.
Could be.
Steve Rocker? Yeah.
I'll have to double check, cause he was really good, too.
It was awesome. Also, the sophomores have been in MCAS mode all week, so that's always fun for them. So happy, I'm done with that, but... And also, on Wednesday, April 1st, we're having a coffee house, where the drama club's trying to raise money, so they're doing, all these people will perform duets and solos in the cafeteria, and there'll be desserts, and like, cookies and all that jazz.
Seven o'clock? When is that again?
On Wednesday, it's at 6:00.
Your first, April 1st?
Yep. So, that'll be a good way to raise money.
I think you've done that in the, so, somebody's done that in the past, and it really is very...
It's an awesome turnout, so... That's about, and Disney trip's coming up, so we're all really excited.
Yeah, that'll be fun, I'm sure the weather will be better there than it would say. I hope so. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? We do have a special guest tonight that I'm thrilled to have. We have Farah Natoli and her daughter, if you could come on up. Is Madame Hayes coming?
Well, I thought so, but maybe she wasn't able to make it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Oh, my pleasure.
Now, you're here to talk about the recent French dress that your daughter went on.
Yes.
And you're also here to talk about something very generous of you. So if you could just tell the audience what you're here for.
Absolutely. I want to actually thank Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Lucia for giving me this opportunity to come here and talk to you all, because I'm a huge fan of letting the kids travel outside of the United States, within the United States as well, but I think what you learn from the culture of other countries, and getting to know different people, seeing different food, different views, it's, for me, it's been amazing. I mean, you can clearly tell from my accent that I wasn't born here. And before coming to the United States, I had a very different view of what Americans are like. And it wasn't a favorable view, to be honest. And then I came here, I have an American husband, an American child, clearly tells you how much that view has changed for me. And her friends, they're like my children now, and it's, I would have never had the courage of getting to know what this country is about if I hadn't been able to come here as a student. And, so, I think it's remarkable that the school allows for the kids to go to different places, and get to see other countries, and get to know other people, and grow up being open-minded, and willing to accept different things from different cultures, and hopefully raise their children to be just the same. And, God knows, as time has gone by, we have very much stopped doing things that our great-grandparents were doing. Some of the culture has gotten lost, even though we are a melting pot. The culture has really gotten lost, in a way. I'm testament to that. So it would be great for our kids to be able to experience some of the things that their great-grandparents used to do, and learn about that. So, to do that, I wanted to start a fund, and starting by donating a thousand dollars, hopefully every year, and I'm more than happy to do a fundraiser for this purpose, to allow more of the kids to be able to go to different places and different countries. We have great teachers, fantastic, they're more than just teachers to the kids, they're like parents to them. And they really take care of them when they go on trips. So I can't think of a better school to do this. So I would like to start by donation, and I think Ariana can talk to you more about the travel, because unfortunately, I wasn't lucky enough to go to France, she was.
It was honestly one of the most amazing experiences, I've traveled a lot, and so, it was just incredible. I learned so much in just a week, and my French grade has gone up since, so it just proves it.
You speak the language a little better, right?
Yes. And it really boosted my confidence with the French language, because I was able to keep consistent conversations, and proved that what you're learning in the classroom is helpful, and you get to learn the culture side, you get to improve it, it's just a great trip overall.
So when you were over there, and you did speak English at all, were they, like, what was the attitude that the natives, like, how were they with you? Were they understanding, were they a little aloof?
They were very understanding, they, we tried our hardest to speak as much French as we could, but there would come times where we just didn't know certain words that were very important. And so, they were very willing to work with us in that sense. If they needed to switch over to English for certain points, we would have this whole half-French, half-English situation going on, and it just, everyone just appreciated the other person a little bit more.
So that was nice that you could rely on your peers, too, to help.
Oh, yes.
That's nice. Yeah, I've heard nothing but great things from the kids that went, and from the teachers that went, too, so that's so nice.
They were, they were really happy to be able, the teachers were really happy to be able to help you with that experience, you know, and they said it was great. I mean, Madame Hayes has spoken to me many times since then, and said, "Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, we really appreciate it."
It was incredible.
And the kids had a great time.
Yes.
And can you just share a few of the places that you visited, or saw?
We went to, we briefly walked through the Eiffel Tower, didn't get to see much of that. We went to Cassis, which everybody loved, it's like a little beach town, and we got to boat around and just see some of the views of France. We got to go to, see now they're all slipping my mind.
Did you see Versailles?
Yep, we went to Versailles.
Normandy.
Normandy is, Normandy Beach.
Something got added because of not being able to spend as much time in Paris, we added that.
It was, that was really nice to see.
What was your favorite food?
That's a hard one.
Or the least favorite.
I was a big fan of the escargot, actually.
Oh, you were?
And you've never tried it before?
No, I hadn't. Thank you.
Yeah, I heard it was a lot, you know, you guys were like busy the whole time.
Oh yeah, they packed the agenda.
Yes.
Did you at any point feel like you were worried about your safety?
Oh, no, not at all, it was, we were very happy.
Well, I know the tour company had said that, obviously, they have a very strict policy of making sure that, you know, students are always, you know, in the, in good hands, and, you know, they spoke to me about how, if they, if there is any danger, potential danger, they just reroute everything, you know, they just, they have a way of knowing, sort of, you know, what is happening that might be potentially concerning.
Absolutely, and there was the, because of the things that had happened prior, there was a day where normally we would have taken the bullet train, and they were very willing to, we sat in a bus, I think it was five, six hour bus ride, maybe more, and we were all very comfortable the whole time, no one had any complaints, and they were very willing to work with us, and just drive across France.
Good, good.
That is good.
I'm glad it was... So you're a senior?
I'm a junior.
You're a junior, okay. Well, it's very generous of you, to put forth that money to allow other students the opportunity. Now, how are you going to, you'll set up a fund, or Joan will set up a fund?
We'll do it through the public school donation.
Okay.
So that it will be a section of that, the money will just go directly to that.
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea to start, like, some fundraising efforts to see what we can do.
Cause it is expensive, right?
It is expensive.
This would help maybe to lower the cost for everybody, or offset the cost for...
Absolutely, and not, I mean, I know some of her friends that actually, the kids had to work and save up every penny they had, to be able to go on this trip. And, you know, for some of the kids, going to Florida and going to France really was too much, they couldn't do it, but they are both amazing opportunities. So if, you know, there's something that I can do to help kids be able to do both, great. If there are kids that really need a little bit more help, that's fantastic. And if we can even reduce the cost, I mean, for the teachers, I have no objection to having this money go to, be able to have some of the teachers go there, because they are a huge part of this trip.
Yes, you're right, yeah.
And, I mean, I know Madame Hayes was, I can't tell you, but Ariana, what happens is that her passport was actually not valid.
Oh, yes, I remember hearing this.
I had to go the next day, on my own plane.
So you went to the airport originally, and that's where you found out that your passport was not
Yes.
good to travel?
Yes.
So then you had to do whatever you needed to do to get that reinstated, or get...
We got a rushed passport the next day, and I got on a plane later that night.
So you were all by yourself?
Yes.
And then I heard that Madame Hayes then drove like three hours, or...
She did, so she could...
She did, and she came back to pick her up from the airport. And, to be honest, I was not worried even for a second, because, for one thing, you know, I knew from just the night before, when they realized what was going on, immediately, both Madame Hayes and Mr. Riga, they had all the list of everything that we would need, had extra copy, Mr. Riga was one of the most organized people I've ever seen in my life, pulled everything out, it's like, here, I took pictures of all of them, you need these, this is my cell number, this is my, you know, this is how you can get hold of me via email, this is everything. So, and then name of the tour guide over there, over here, I had their phone numbers. I was very comfortable, I knew there was not going to be any issue. It's a drug flight, she flew there, she just got to the airport, and not an issue, and Madame Hayes came and picked her up. And then they had to take three trains to go back, and, you know, she took care of helping her get there. And it's, to me, that's amazing, that your teacher would be willing to do that for you. We were willing to hire somebody to actually drive her there, and looking at the cost, it was enormous, but we were willing to do it, because we didn't want to take away this opportunity. And we're very, very thankful to Madame Hayes for giving up part of her trip.
Somebody could have just said, "Well, you just didn't have all the ducks in a row, so sorry, you missed the chance." But that, that's great to hear, that...
They didn't even, you're right, they didn't even blink once saying, "Oh, well, you know, she can't go, sorry." It was, no, what can we do together there, and make sure she catches up with everyone? Which was amazing to me.
Not only that, but as soon as I got there, I got a call from the tour company to confirm the fact that I was there, and that I was with my chaperone, and then, they called you. They also, Madame Hayes was a little bit late, so they called the tour guide, who was with the students, and they got ahold of Madame Hayes as well, so it was very much, very...
Very organized, which is nice. I'm sure that will make a lot of other parents feel uncomfortable.
Absolutely, it was fantastic.
I'm glad I didn't put a damper on your trip, though. Like, that to me would have been like, oh, forget it, you're not going.
You know, that's great that you did that. And that's a lot for a girl your age to go through all by yourself, you know, that's, that's great. I know, so we'll accept the...
Yes, we'll accept the donation.
Donation. So the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the $1,000 donation from Mrs. Natoli and her family with gratitude, as presented, it's very generous of you.
Thank you, thanks for the option.
So, yeah, we can just give it to Laura, or give it to Joan, the business manager will take it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. We could please have Tyler Holston, the Canterbury Lake trip approval.
Couple artifacts for you.
Hey there.
So, these are some, a couple pictures from our trip last year. So, last year about this time, I was before you, asking for permission to go to Canterbury Lake. We requested to go to Canterbury Lake last year with our group of 28 5th graders in 5th grade band, and we ended up getting a silver medal at the music festival, so that was accomplishment for the students, because we knew that in order to grow our band and music program, we wanted to kind of be adjudicated, it's an important component with the music standards, so...
Award-winning.
Oh, yeah, we wanted, we wanted to have the kid, let the kids have that experience of being evaluated by someone else besides me, and hearing the instruction, and the barking at them, always coming from me, so we wanted them to hear it from someone else, so it was a great experience. They performed in front of two music judges, they've been music ed professionals in the field, and then we went to, and they had one of the gentlemen come up and work with the students for 15 minutes on how to improve their performance. And then we went to Canterbury Lake a couple Saturdays after that, and we had a really awesome time. We spent the whole day there. It was a blast just to hang out with the students, and to interact with the parents as well. I think they got a really huge kick out of me riding the Boston Tea Party like five times. I had to keep going with every other group, so...
It's nice when the kids can see you in a different light, right?
Yeah, and I think it was, it was a big step for some of the 5th graders, too, because I think for some of them, it was their first trip that their parents weren't going on. They were with the group, and...
Oh, yeah, 5th grade.
So, yeah, that was their, that was their first little trip that they got to go on, so it was a really neat experience. So, I'm here tonight because our numbers have grown slightly. We have 35 students in 5th grade band this year. And, like I said, we kind of wanted to make this a bit of a tradition, where the students last year at Pembroke, we wanted to have them to be able to go, thank you, we wanted to have them to be able to go to the music festival, and just to have that experience. This year, all we've been talking about is going for the gold, because we were really close to a gold medal last year, but it's a good, a great experience for them to be able to show improvement as well, so I'm sure they've been doing a lot of extra practicing as well, so we can get that. We're really wanting that gold medal. So, yes, I'm here because it is an out-of-state trip for Canterbury Lake. We're requesting to go again this year to take the 35 students. I have an update from the paperwork, which I said I was going to choose the five parents, but I've already solidified the parents that are going to be going, and they have agreed to go, so...
Now Tyler, do other, do other, do the families go, like, are they welcome to go if they want to?
Yes, there is that option where they can purchase tickets through the music festival at a slightly discounted rate. We did have some families go, and they even rode the bus with us, because we had some room on the bus. But, it was, it was a nice, and some of the kids were like, "Well, I really want to just hang out with my friends," so...
Yeah, I can see both sides.
Yeah, they wanted that, and then there were some parents that did want to go, so we had extra eyes and stuff in the park, so it was, no one got lost, and no one got hurt, so that was...
This is like a practice for Six Flags?
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
Like, it's a little smaller.
So, yeah, that's why we thought it was, I thought, I came upon the experience the beginning of last year, and I was like, that sounded like something that would be really great for the kids, and especially since they took elementary groups. And it's pretty unique in our district to be able to have elementary bands, so we thought that would be a great experience for the kids to be able to do that.
Well, that's nice, and I appreciate the fact that you take your Saturday off to do that with them, which is very kind of you to do that. You know, teachers are so dedicated in a lot of different ways, and I think a lot of times we don't like, you know, really acknowledge that, so I do appreciate that, just that you're making it happen, which is nice.
Appreciate it.
Does anyone have any questions specifically for it? Can you share us some pictures when you, when you're done, and come back and tell us all about it?
Of course, will do. Hopefully we'll have a gold medal to put in there.
That would be nice.
Our brand new school display case.
Even if you don't have a gold medal, we know you'll do your best, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the 5th grade band trip to Canterbury Lake Park on June 6th, 2015, as presented.
So moved.
Discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have fun, have a great time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tyler.
Good luck. I was getting a little jumpy on that one. I'll admit it. Okay, so we have the school building committee, the middle high school renovation update, which I'm really looking forward to talking to Ally about.
Well, I brought you Carl and Chuck to talk to you about it.
I haven't seen you guys in so long. Just seems like we were seeing each other like every other week, and then...
Before they actually talk about that, I would just like to let you know that before the next building committee meeting, April 14th, we're meeting over at the new building at 6:30 for a tour, and we'd love to have you join us from 6:30 to 7:30.
So, last time when we threw out that date, we thought there could have been a possible conflict. Margaret, didn't we talk about it?
There is a conflict.
And we're still gonna go through with it?
There's a concert that night.
A 4th and 5th grade concert.
Yes.
So you're, you're still gonna have it?
It is, because it's our, it's our building committee meeting.
It's early.
So what time is the concert?
Six and seven, so I probably won't be there for the concert.
So the tour is at what time?
6:30.
6:30, okay. Thank you for having us at the tour, we're excited to be here.
Well, you're gonna be very impressed when you see it.
You won't have, it's been a while since you've actually...
The changes are astronomical, yeah. I went through it last week, so...
Still closed-toed, recommendation?
Oh, yeah.
Because it's still a construction site.
Still on a construction.
Yes. Okay, so, would you like to go ahead and run through the...
You'd like to know about the scope of the high school project, right, and the schedule?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And what we're here for. It's timely, because we just received bids on it.
Right, that's why we did it.
The building, and he just awarded, so I've got a series of plans that show sort of the paperwork, and then a couple more plans that show more of the timing of it, too. The thing to keep in mind with this project at the high school is that it started off being connected to the Pembroke project, because the MSBA realized we're going to be pulling the 6th grade out of the high school into the Pembroke, and they wanted to make sure that the spaces that were vacated, and in fact, the whole building at the high school was, was paid attention to and made part of this, to address not only facilities kinds of issues, the biggest of which is the, you know, the water infiltration on the lower levels, it's always kind of damp there, and you can tell that the, you know, the floor tile is bad, and the ceilings are absorbing moisture and that sort of thing. So the moisture needs to be addressed, and the roof as well, it's sort of at the end of its life. So the sort of facilities issues, there were also NIESQ issues identified in their last, it goes back a number of years, their accreditation visit, that they identified some things that were deficient that need to be addressed. And then, third was just sort of repurposing the spaces that the 6th grade is going to vacate, and making sure that the building is, is, you know, being used educationally the best way possible, specifically the special ed spaces, that they be treated more sort of responsibly, and up to, up to speed, now that we have this opportunity to utilize some of the space being vacated, so... So these plans kind of outline, and with all that being said, we should all keep in mind, obviously, it's a limited renovation project. We're not going through the entire building, it's not going to transform the building in any way when the project's done. It's very limited, it's limited in time, as you'll see, it's starting in, you know, the spring, and ending in September or so, so it's not, you know, a full-blown renovation project, it is limited. And so, the plans kind of highlight the areas. This is the first floor and the lowest level, the biggest portion of work here in terms of reconfiguration is the lowest level on the front of the building, which are now kind of makeshift rooms, you know, one of them's used for science, physics, and one of them is an art space, and, but they're just kind of, you know, makeshift partitions there, the finishes are still kind of left over from when it was an industrial shop area and that kind of thing. And then, if you can see it, these lighter areas here are all the areas where the floor tile is bad because of the moisture. And so primarily, the work going on in those spaces is replacing the floor tile, and putting down this moisture, what's called moisture mitigation surface, and I'll show you in the site plan, too, there's work on the exterior of the building as well to address the drainage issues. But, on the inside, that's that area. In this area where the more intense work is going, we're actually, you know, creating a new corridor, so now the traffic pattern will be a lot more sort of sane and straight-forward in a way down here. All the walls will be permanent walls, you know, constructed from floor to ceiling, and creating a new chorus room here, a new art room here with some storage, a special ed spa, or an IT office here, and a, and a resource space there. And then, the, the other space that's opening up is some of the special ed offices that were in this area are moving back to Pearlie, since the kindergarten and first grade, or the kindergarten, rather, is moving up to Pembroke there, so this space here is, becomes available, and so the Life Skills Special Ed Program occupies that in a, in a regular classroom here as well. So, those areas all get constructed as part of this project here, and as I said, all of the floor and ceiling in these areas, including the corridors, get reworked. Not, not much of anything happening here, except down this end of the building, near these lower locker rooms down here, there's also some moisture issues. And so, some of the floor will be repaired and refinished down in that area. Otherwise, not much more going on in the building. On the middle level of the building, the biggest thing is at this end, the gymnasium, the issue there, as everyone probably knows, is how tight the court was always to the sidewalls, to the bleachers, it was really not safe, and it's been noted that way by a couple different reviews and so forth, and so... Without making the building any bigger, the best way that we can improve that is actually to shift the court. So take out the bleachers that are there, replace them with new bleachers, so that's an improvement, but with, with a few, fewer rows of seats, but so to allow the court to be shifted over, so that we get the proper apron, at least on these two sides, the long dimensions of the court. And then on the short dimensions of the court, we'll be adding wall pads, you know, those sort of crash pads, so at least it takes a little of the curse off the, you know, the short end overrun areas there.
Carl, how many seats are we missing, how are we losing, how many?
Because they're bleachers, you know, it's kind of in an exact science as to how many people can fit there. Uh, uh, because they're bleachers, you know, it's kind of in an exact science as to how many people can fit there. I think there's maybe, um, somewhere like fifty seats fewer than are there, because we gain, what we're also gonna be doing is taking out that, that hard, uh, partition.
Yeah.
Um, because that makes a gap in the bleachers, so when that comes out, we can at least run the bleachers kind of continuous now. And we'll also be taking up one of those little storage closets at one end. So we gain some length in the bleachers to compensate for the, for the numbers of rows that are being shortened there.
Carl, will they go hi, will they be higher, or you can't really?
No, they'll actually be lower, because there's fewer lo, rows, so when they're stacked against the wall, they're lower than the current bleachers.
Okay, so they're not, the, 'cause somebody asked me that, so that, I know they're not gonna come out as far, but they're not gonna be necessarily steeper?
No.
Okay.
Um, and bleachers today, too, are one of the safety things, is that they're closed, you know, there's no openings in them.
Yeah.
So you can't drop your keys down.
Yeah, you can't get under them, and, you know, that sort of thing, so they're a little more sanitary and a little safer, uh, in that regard. So that's, that's the biggest thing that's going on in here. In order to do that, obviously, the floor gets stripped, so that you can paint new game lines on there, the backboards get moved, um, and, and some other related minor, um, improvements in there, but that's the main, uh, piece of work there. And then, otherwise, on the, on this level here, the, the library is, again, very little work here, but, um, a, a few, um, uh, sort of strategic, uh, improvements of related to special ed spaces and related to the computer lab that's off of the library. Again, this was sort of a makeshift, uh, improvement done over the years, where these walls weren't quite real, you know, solid walls that went all the way full height, they were just kind of temporary, almost partitions, we're gonna make those permanent. We're creating a few other offices and special ed spaces again here, um, including this space here. One of the, one of the objectives here on, on a couple of levels was to get as many of the teaching spaces on the perimeter of the building as we could to get natural light into them, so they're not, you know, being tied in closets and in interior windowless spaces.
Any technology upgrades?
Um, there is a little bit in these spaces, I mean, this is already a computer lab, but every space that's touched, um, will, you know, the technology, the outlets and the power will be, um, upgraded accordingly. But, again, we're not doing, going throughout the building and changing the technology as part of this.
Okay.
There, there actually is a new phone system, uh, as part of the scope of the project, um, there. And then, on the upper level, um, these were the spaces that, um, are being vacated, that were sixth grade, uh, sixth grade science rooms, sixth grade classrooms. Those actually don't require much work, other than change the sign on the door and the wall, and make them seventh grade classrooms, and, and it allows us to get that science room off the lower level and bring it upstairs, that's how we can create the chorus room down below. So that, that's one way to gain space here. Um, and again, there were some special ed spaces, one was in a storage closet here, that's being, um, moved out. And this room here, which was the compass program, um, even though it's on the perimeter of the building, didn't have windows, so we're actually gonna cut into the outside wall and add windows there to get natural light into those spaces as well. Um, and, and because we're displacing a couple of offices, we're adding a few office administrative space to the administrative suite in there. So that's basically what's going on, um, in the scope of the work, and then, as we said, the entire roof is being replaced. Um, and that involves, you know, taking all the, the units, the air conditioning units that are there off, relocating them, and then putting them back. And in some cases, it's already in the district's budget to buy some new, um, rooftop units.
Yeah, that's more important.
With, with this work, but all that will happen afterward, you know, uh, kind of in a coordinated fashion there.
So you're talking about the roof, Carl?
Yes.
I think at the building committee meeting, you, you guys made a couple of decisions, right, uh, or something on the roof, could you say?
Yes, we voted to eliminate the skylights, and we voted to accept an alternate, which is to add windows to the basement.
If you can see this photograph here, and those are familiar with the high school, you know, the backside of the building where the hill is. Um, right now, these windows, which are into science rooms, are just glass block, they're kind of industrial and.
At one time, I bet they were cool, they're not anymore.
Somewhat opaque.
Like public security.
So the alternate is to take out those glass blocks and put in regular glass windows there. And there's a couple, you know, some related, um, ventilation work, because there are some fans mounted in those windows that have to be, uh, dealt with as part of this, so, um, that, because the budget, uh, the bids came in under budget, we can afford to add that, that back in as, as an alternate, and still be well under budget. Um, this plan is the site plan of the high school, here's the, the entrance road here, the parking lot, the new field is over here. So here's the footprint of the school. The, the, one of the, the reasons for the drainage problems on this school is because it's sitting at the toe of a slope here, and so the water, both the surface water and sort of the underground water is, is being directed this way, and there's not enough, um, in place now to redirect it around the school, so that's basically what we're gonna do. We're, starting at the top of the hill, there's actually gonna be some, some swales to divert the water, uh, the surface water, a little bit towards the edges, starting up there. Then, at the toe of the slope, at, at the bottom here, we'll pick up both the surface water with new, um, uh, uh, swales and drains, and, um, underground, add a pipe, uh, because the lowest level of the building is, is below the exterior grade, it's like a basement conditioner, half basement. So we're gonna excavate this entire back here, waterproof the wall with, with, uh, special waterproofing, um, put in a pipe to direct the water around into this drainage area that already exists in front of the school, and then backfill and repave it. So when it's all said and done, it'll look pretty much the same as what's there, it'll still be paved, there will be new windows there, but the, the grading of the hillside will still be the same, we're not changing that, uh, in any significant way. We're just, as I say, picking up the water, diverting it around the building. And then, as kind of belt and suspenders, you might say, even if some does still get through, we're doing that work inside the building to add that layer of waterproofing under the new floor finishes, so, um, it, uh, you know, it's one of those things where a lot of the budget is being spent on things you'll never see, but hopefully, um, it, it takes a lot of your future maintenance and concerns away. Um, this plan also, uh, helps explain the, the schedule, um, because it is a fair amount of work to be done in a, in a limited, uh, amount of time. We wanted to do this without displacing kids, uh, and teachers, um, a, a, as little as possible in the school year, so we wanted as much of the work to be done only during the summer months when it's unoccupied, but there's kind of two exceptions to that, where, um, uh, because we can, um, we're gonna allow the contractors start early in the gymnasium at this end of the building. That's the only piece of work that will be going on this spring while students are, are still in, in school. Uh, and even then, there, there'll be virtually no disruption sort of to the front of the school. The contractor's gonna have to park way down the end of the building, make his way in, you know, he'll probably put a dumpster here, he'll probably, you know, drive up to the building occasionally to unload materials. But essentially, what's gonna be going on at the, in the first phase is that work I described in the gym, taking out the, um, the bleachers, taking down that hard partition, sanding the floors maybe, I'm not even sure they'll get that far while school's still in session. Um, but so it's mainly that demolition work, that prep, preparatory work, um, at this end of the building. Otherwise, um, the bulk of the rest of the work that I described all starts, um, right now, I think it's scheduled July seventh. So, uh, even if you extend the end of the school year, because it's snow days and you need a few days to.
More days, Carl. Twenty-third.
Okay, if you need a few days to empty out.
We're starting on the twenty-fourth.
There you go.
You know, you gotta.
We, we, we set that up, Carl, we knew that was gonna happen.
So we, we need to start vacate those spaces, you know, the school's got some equipment and furniture that's gotta be moved out, that's, that's the school department's responsibility, not the contractors, but, um, so once we turn over the space, the contractor can, can start working in there, um, as early as possible. In the contract, in the bid documents, it, it said July seventh, we may be able to give the contractor a few more days if, um.
Well, we have to, we have to relocate the people at the high school that need to work all summer, so we're working on that for Pearlie. So they'll come to Pearlie, plus Donna had to move all of her special ed programs to Pearlie, so Pearlie's gonna be very busy this summer.
A hopping place.
But it is the swing space, we, we've always talked about that, that's the, we needed that.
It's great to have that. And the timing's perfect, you know, with Pembroke, uh, being virtually complete and able to accept furniture in the summer, and, uh, even earlier, um, everything should move into place properly there.
Where are they gonna have the gym classes? Well, that's, that's the challenge, right?
Yeah, it's a, all the seniors are on outside.
Because we're gonna have a beautiful, very warm, no rainy spring.
Did you see outside purpose?
A turf field, a new turf field available.
Has to pour to get rid of the snow.
Small gym is available.
The small gym's available, yeah. But the turf will be nice.
And we have that starting April, uh, vacation.
Yeah.
Um, so when the students come back after April vacation is when you have to have outside gym.
So we have May and half of June.
Yeah. The bulk of the work, there's really three phases, as I said, so the only thing that's, uh, the way to think of it, there's three phases. One of the phases is work that can start early, and one of the phases is work that can finish late. The part that can, that can start early is the gym, the part that can finish late is that work in the front of the building, creating the, uh, right here, the, uh, chorus room and art room down on the lower level, that's, and I'll show you in, in the plan in a minute. So, um, during the school year, like we said, there'll be a little bit of overlap, um, where there'll be, you know, there'll still be some work going on next, um, the end of August and September when students and teachers return. Uh, but again, hopefully, it's very clear, and we'll work with the contractor all through this, and, and with Peter and the administration to make sure that their activities are segregated, you know, that buses can always come and turn around here, there's no imposition on the parking lots here by any of the contractor's vehicles, they have to park over here, um, out of the way. Um, they can even park up into that road that goes up the hill, um, you know, if they need some additional parking, but, um, uh, we'll keep, you know, close watch, Chuck and, and his company has somebody there, you know, uh, every day watching over the activities and being a good, um, uh, liaison with the principal and so forth. So, um, that, that's the extent of the work, as I say, and in terms of site work, there's that drainage work behind the building, and then, because that, that water eventually flows into this low area, probably didn't even realize that there's this detention pond there, because it's so overgrown right now, if you go out to the, to the parking lot, it's kind of between the parking lot and the baseball field towards Pearlie, there, there is actually a depression there that's meant to accept water, um, but it's so overgrown, it, it doesn't, um, accept as much water as it should, so part of this is gonna be to clean that out. It's kind of sensitive work, um, 'cause you can't, you know, go in there with big equipment and dig it out, it, it's gonna be kind of, uh, uh, a lot of handwork and so forth, but the idea is it's gonna improve the capacity of, of that area to accept, uh, um, additional drainage. So that's the only site work going on, and then, like I said, repaving it or any disturbed areas, if, if the contractor does disturb something, they'll repave it and restore it to its original condition. Otherwise, not much else going on, on the exterior. And as I said, you, you can see the limits now, the, of the two areas, that this area can, the, is the gymnasium that can start early, this area is the, the chorus room, that life skills room, the art room here across the front of the building, that's the area that, that the contractor can finish late. And by late, we, we put the date of, of Halloween, October thirty-first, um, as to when that has to be done. So first, basically, two months of school, there'll be a little bit of overlap, but the contractor's work will be totally segregated from, from the, you know, ongoing, um, education, even to the extent, this one stairway, which will become the entrance for the contractor, we sort of did a blow-up here and showed the contractor, uh, a way of actually constructing a, a partition in that, in that stairwell. So students are on one side, contractors are on the other, they minimize how much contact they ever have with each other. You know, we can't say that it'll never happen, but, um, you know, there may be times where, you know, the superintendent may, of, of the contractor's forces may have to shut off an electric panel, or, you know, walk down the hall to talk to the principal or something, or coordinate. Um, so there, you know, there may be times when there are construction workers, um, uh, in the school, but it's gonna be very minimal. All workers have to be Cory-checked, all of them will have badges, they'll all be easily identified, and, and we'll, you know, as I say, go over this, um, right from the start at our pre-construction meeting, which I think is set up for next week, starting there.
Correct, next Wednesday.
Um, and then, regularly, as any new workers come on the site, we'll go over those kind of procedures again. So that's, I think, the summary of things, there'll be a lot of work going on this summer when, when the building is, is basically empty, and they'll try to obviously maximize their crews and, and get everything done. Um, you can see everything else in the building has to get done between the end of school and the start of school, in that limited window of, of time, but that's the way the, the bidders all bid it, they understand it, um, they've all basically agreed they can do it by submitting a bid and, with their price. And the prices came in, like we said, um, not only all of them under budget, all of them were very close together, too, which was a good sign, that there's nothing crazy going on here or something that, um, 'cause it is kind of a, a tricky job, it's not a straightforward, build a new school kind of project, uh, for a contractor, so.
Yeah, it's almost, it's all over the place, really. But, um, as you, as you mentioned, a lot of the work that's being done is stuff that we will never see, that people will never see, but we need to let the townspeople know, that was the cause, like, when you go into the, like, the health room and all those rooms where the floors are buckled, I mean, that, they were in bad shape, Michael and I toured that, and he, and you've never been in that part of the school, or even in that school, so you were pretty surprised, I'm sure.
It was overpulled, and yeah.
So that's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna look great, once it's all done and, and fixed the way it should be. Water is crazy, the damage that it can do.
Yeah, number one enemy of.
Yeah.
Architecture.
Very, I'm very excited for it.
Flow area, where they're building the new science rooms.
Yeah.
That's gonna make sense now, that there is, be a hallway that connects all the way around, like it does on the other floors. That will just make, I think, the flow in that area go.
You're gaining a chorus room, so that.
Which we needed desperately.
Right, you don't have to leave things set up on stage, you can use the stage for rehearsals and, and things like that, um, and gaining a sort of real art room as opposed to a kind of makeshift one.
Right.
And can you explain what's gonna happen with the teacher's lounge?
Um, oh, the teachers get relocated.
That one on the first floor, that one?
Yeah, they stay on the first floor, and, and basically, th- this used to be the teacher's space, it's now moving over here. So it's comparable space in terms of the amount of area.
The amount of space, yeah.
They'll still have a sink and a coffee area and a, and access to the, you know, the men's and women's rooms haven't changed, um, in that regard. And, and it's just, like I said, we made the value judgment that the students deserve the, the windows, and the teachers who aren't in there all day are in the interior space.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so you all approved Russo Construction as the.
Russo, yes.
Russo.
Yep.
As the general contractor for the project.
Yeah, we've been talking to him already, and as I said, we've got a meeting set up already there, anxious to get going, 'cause every day is valuable to them.
For sure, for sure, that's great.
That is great, I'm excited for it.
And where does Russo Construction base data?
Harv, Har- Harvard, Mass.
Okay.
But their, their lead P, PM lives right up the street there.
Oh.
He lives up, just outside of New, 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 Newburyport.
Okay, excellent.
So it's very close.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out and showing it to us, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Look forward to your trip at Pembroke.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Ellie.
You're welcome.
Nice to see you.
No problem.
It's great.
So Barbie, I wonder if we could do Julie, um, before the translation, because there are some people here that I'd like to make sure don't have to stay later.
Sure. Okay, so Julie, do you wanna, Julie, sorry. Julie, you wanna come up with your, your people?
My friend is here.
I know, he knew you were gonna be waiting for him.
He was watching the door, waiting for you.
Ellie doesn't wanna be up by herself.
This is a valuable group, Ellie.
It is.
My people is a very valuable group, Julie.
You like, don't know what it looks like outside.
Okay, so while you're trying to get it together, can, can we just have introductions, for my?
Sure, I'm Kate Donlin, I'm the literacy coach at Pearlie School.
And I'm Maureen O'Connor, the literacy coach at Pembroke School.
And I'm Ellie Viera, the department head of the middle high school for ELA.
So, um.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, we're happy to have them here, and I know it's not an easy night to be out, uh, especially with the traveling that a lot of these people.
Especially when there's lots of them, right?
Just kinda scary with all that fog.
This is fun to talk about. This is why we open our doors every day, yeah?
Easy and every day is a big day, right?
So, um, I'll get started, I think we're gonna have to pull that little.
Ray, maybe you could pull it?
Doesn't appear like there's a picture on it, though. Unless I'm just not seeing it.
Get it going. We always have our little moments with anthology, as you know.
We always have Plan B. We have hard copies.
You do have hard copies.
Yeah.
Power for the course.
So I think it'll come popping up here in a minute. So, um, when we were talking about where should we start, when, um, just to have the conversation about what we're working on with curriculum, um, I thought it would be good to start with ELA, and that's basically what we're gonna talk about tonight, because that is the vertical team that's been, um, working for the last three years, and, and has really done an extensive amount of work, uh, in the district, and so I thought it would be a good idea for us to share with you the level of work that we've been doing, and just to keep you informed of, you know, some updates that we've made across the last few years here for curriculum. You can't see everything, can you? Yeah, that is weird. Let me see if I can get that to come up there. You get to see my whole hard drive while you're.
Interesting looking folders up there.
We'll get it to work. Um, so let's see if we can make that happen. So for us, um, over the course of the last three years, I don't know if you're familiar with this green booklet, but all the people on the vertical team are, and this has been our bible, uh, for the last three years, really trying to work out all of the standards that are in here, pre-K to twelve for ELA. And as you know, the, the state adopted new standards in twenty eleven and it's taken us really up until this point to read through this document. But in addition to that, the vertical team, uh, for ELA had to read through three different appendices for this one document. And they're about two hundred pages, three hundred pages each. So in, in, in addition to this, we had to work through all the appendix material. And that, that aligned for us, you know, what type of text to use and what should student writing look like at the grade levels. And, you know, it was an incredible amount of research that they had broken out and, and kind of aligned for us. But we had to break it out by grade level and we had to really look at it and compare it to what we had internally, you know, and what our trajectories looked like. And it was so much reading and so much conversation, but, um, it was definitely worth the, the many, many hours and years it took to get, I think, to this place. Because really do have to understand what all of that looks like first, before you can really try to imagine what a curriculum would look like. In- incorporating a lot of those ideas and then combining that with what you already have. So it's been a really long and interesting journey, but we're excited about, um, about where we are with that. So over the course of the last three years, we've been focusing on all the things that you see listed here, building trajectories. Um, that focus on ELA as a content area. And each content area has its own set of prerequisite skills that students need to learn. So for ELA, we talk about it in terms of genre. So we talk about fiction, nonfiction, poetry, drama. And then even in nonfiction, how many different things fall into that? What does that look like? Um, you know, there's all, obviously many different types of nonfiction, many different types of fiction, uh, many different types of poems and, and the things that, that kids need to learn across, you know, across grade levels. So we did that, in addition to that, we also looked though, because these standards incorporate science and social studies, um, reading and understand technical literature, i- it's really very deep. It doesn't look deep, if you look at it this way, but when you really open it up and look at it with all of the other materials aligned to that, you really do understand how deep it truly is. So we decided that we were going to focus on these areas here and really try to combine all of that thinking into a working curriculum. So we adopted the understanding by design format. We were trained with, uh, Jay McTie, which was great day, uh, the department heads and the literacy coaches and Carol. We went and had a training with Jay McTie to learn a little bit more how that, that format works and when it's, um, when you're creating a curriculum for your, for your entire school district. Uh, we looked at the reading literature standards, the informational standards, what the student learning expectations are at each grade level. Because they grow upon each other, so you can't just jump in. You have to look what happens before, the year before, and where are the kids going after? And how can we ensure that we're making all of those things happen? Um, student writing expectations, that has been a big conversation and will continue into next year. Because now that we have pretty much identified what we know we need to teach in each grade level and, and how to do it, and what it looks like, we have to start looking at student work. So what is, what should writing look like across those grade levels and in these different standards? Um, and that's our, that's our project for next year. Uh, we also had to identify academic vocabulary. What kind of academic vocabulary do our students need to know? Not only vocabulary words, but also what are the different vocabulary terms that go with figurative language and the different genres that are being taught? And also, how do we build in graphic organizers? How can we ensure that learning is visual and, and it really does support students along the way? We had to look at historical documents, primary documents, social studies standards, science standards, science concepts. How can we build those into nonfiction and informational texts? I mean, it's been a pretty elaborate process, wouldn't you say? But it's been a great one, nonetheless. So I thought I would kind of show you with pictures, some of the work that we've done over the last three years. And so, um, we, like I said, we take this green document, but it really does take the people, um, and a lot of collaboration and feedback to do this kind of work. And so our vertical team met with, uh, we've met over the course of the last three years. We meet once a month. And, uh, we really do break down the material and try to determine what it, should this look like in fourth grade versus seventh and that kind of thing. Um, we were trained with Bill Ambrosi, who is a trainer, um, I've worked with at the Department of Ed. And he helped us really solidify what the student expectations should look like and, and what should student work be at the end of all of this? And how do we know our students are growing? And so he helped us quite a bit with that and our writing rubrics as well. The bottom picture that you can't see is, uh, all the work that we were doing at Pembroke. Teachers working in teams, working collaboratively and trying to kind of formulate the plans and working that way. So unpacking these standards is pretty messy work. Uh, what we're trying to show you in the, in these pictures, um, is kind of a progression of, of thought and idea. So what we have to do when we unpack standards, and we're doing this in math and soon to be in science, we have to ask these questions. How do I know what to teach and, and how to teach it? And, you know, that's a really big question and it really does kind of help us focus some of the work. So on the left, you'll see kind of, and it was funny, we were laughing a little bit, these are pictures I took three years ago. Just to give you some, you know, just to give you a timeframe here. This is three years ago, so this is the beginning of the pro- progression of, you know, what does reading look like in grades two through five versus six through eight versus nine and ten and then eleven and twelve. And then the last picture there is really just us pulling standards and saying, if we were to create units, what standards would we assume would go into some type of nonfiction unit at, at grade two? We have worked on that quite, quite extensively. And then we have more of that and it just gets messier. So we take the standards, we try to build the units, we, we look at what type of materials we have and what materials we may need. And then we build trajectories. And so to do that, we have to know what are the standards that we're going to teach? What do the units look like in theory? And how do we build those into a workable plan, K to twelve, September through June? And so that, that literally is the, the process that we take. And we do that with, with all of our.
Julie, can you talk about the graphic for a minute? Just how does that get developed?
The, the graphic up here?
No, the words, understanding, the.
All the words.
All those.
That's a wordle.
Wordle.
Yes, that, and, and so that's a wordle based on curriculum. So you take a, a paragraph, uh, from curriculum or for whatever year it is you're reading. And these are the, these are the words that come up more, uh, the most often, I should say, within the work that you're doing. And for us, it was understanding and planning and teaching. If you look, those are the biggest words in the design.
I like it.
So, right, and that, that really kind of tells the story for us about where we kind of had to focus our work and, and make sure that we were staying, you know, you know, be, we were staying on the right track. Teaching and learning are also big items there that you see. And so that's truly the message. Um, but like I said, it's, it's, it's a linear progression, but it's definitely, it can be messy work. So, you see Carol in there?
Yeah, I got her.
Carol and Maureen.
Look at all those books, we were so excited, weren't we?
I know, we were really excited when we, we had done the work. And then we realized, okay, this is what we want it to look like and here's, here's what we need, um, to get into teachers' hands to make that happen. And so, uh, the picture on the left is a fifth grade unit, materials that we're working out of fifth grade for financial literacy. Um, and so it's a combination unit of nonfiction and fiction. But it also allows students to read different chapter books that deal with that topic. And, and at the end of it, the students are a financial advisor. They take on the role of a financial advisor and do a writing piece about how they would advise their, the character and their story um, within, with the research that they had done and, and the readings that they had done.
And, and remember when we had approved money from school choice to, to go to curriculum, purchase a curriculum, materials to support the units? That's where that money, that's what that money paid for.
And so Maureen, I have to say, was such a trooper, uh, getting this in and Kate too. I mean, both of them, they have been so invaluable in this whole process of helping teachers with this work, but also helping me try to figure out what do people need and how do we get it to them, so.
Well, that is one of my questions, how do the teachers embrace that?
I think what we have found is that, and, and that's why I wanted to bring these ladies here, so we could talk a little about that. You know, what does it look like in action? Because you can have all, you know, the greatest plans in the world, but how does it, how does it work? How does it work in the classroom?
Yeah, I mean, I think overall, they've been received very well. Um, I think all teachers want to know exactly what they're doing before they do it. And so they, they were looking at them and, you know, some of them were a little bit, you know, apprehensive. And once they dove in, um, they feel great. I mean, they can see the excitement in the kids and they can see kids reading at all different levels. And they can see, um, a community building experience because everybody's so engaged. Um, and they see them being, children being challenged at every level. Um, it's interesting. And they're also feeling like I'm teaching what I need to teach. And I'm checking those, not, just making sure that the most important part of my job is being done through this rich material that teachers developed. And, um, so, yeah, I mean, overall, it's been very positive.
That's great. Because it can be overwhelming. I mean, teachers have so much stuff now that they didn't have when I was a kid. I mean, even ten years ago.
Being a teacher today is completely different than it used to be. It is, everything has changed.
So I just wonder if, like, the teachers, like, feel like, oh, here's another thing and, you know.
Well, I would have to say, yeah.
Well, I'm sure that they feel that way.
In the culture that we live in, you know, there are times we all feel like that.
It sounds like your work is such an incredible resource for teachers. How do they learn everything you've put together here?
You couldn't hand this to a teacher and say, now figure it out. You know, that's just not right, you know? So it does take a whole team of people to really help with that process. And back in the day, that is how it was done. Here are your standards, go teach. And now, and before standards, don't worry, you'll figure it out. We talk about that all the time.
Yeah, what books you wanted to teach.
Yeah, so it, this landscape in education has changed dramatically. And, and it wouldn't be fair for us to just kind of like, here, hand it over and say, good luck and, you know.
But is there web-based resor- you know, is there a web-based way for teachers to, like, they want to think, oh, I need a graphic organizer for, for this material? What type of graphic organizer might be recommended?
Many of the units that we have have that built in, which is a huge bonus for us. Because we've found that it's really hard for teachers to find the right thing. So we have to give people a lot of opportunities. And sometimes the one that, it may be in there is not really the one that works for your class. So what we're hoping to do is build that base within our Atlas curriculum to say, here are five or six different graphic organizers that you can use for main idea. Or, you, you know, because that is a tough concept to teach, even at any grade level. Or, you know, here are five or six, uh, different styles of note taking that you can work on with your kids and when you're working on, in that vein. So that's, that's kind of the goal. The goal was to get this set and now to build in all the instructional resources to support it or to add to it is, is really the next phase for us.
One of the things that's really critical is having teacher participation, which is why we so mu- much appreciate none of these ladies sitting here.
All the teachers that have.
But all of the vertical teams and, you know, the people doing Tech Tuesdays. There's so many people that are willing to enrich the professional culture by, by, you know, this is not, they don't just show up on, you know, once a month and sit at a meeting and listen to Julie talk.
And I say it all the time, they come on their own time, they don't get paid. There is no glory, you know, in that sense. But I will tell you, we couldn't do this without, without the, the help of all of these people. And so I'm always thankful, I truly am.
Well, when we did first start talking about the vertical teams, I know, um, I hate to admit it, but I was one of those skeptics that said, how are you going to find these teachers to do, yeah, to, to do all that you need to do?
Just have awesome teachers.
And Julie tells us all the time, I don't even have problems finding someone to do it, which to me is great.
Well, I think, I mean, I don't speak for them, but I think, you know, nobody wants to go to more meetings. But if you go to meetings where there's actually good things that come out of it, that then translate and you can see it, like, um, I don't know if Julie's going to mention it, but one of the things we have started doing is these instructional rounds, which I know I mentioned at a previous meeting, we were going to start them. But, you know, um, we went around, uh, last week, I think. And, uh, we were, we were just looking for student engagement, different ways teachers were doing it. But one of the things that was really nice was the amount of student work that was available. And they were working on poetry in many of the classes or they were work, you could, you could actually see what the kids were able, were doing was related to what the work was that these ladies had provided and using the resources and supports. And then the best part of it was that the kids, when you sat down with the kids, because we did that, and you asked them, what are you doing? And, you know, they, I thought they were amazingly, um, clear about what they were doing and why and how they had engaged in the writing process and how they had edited and how they were using the concept that the teacher had just got through teaching in their work. I mean, to me, that, this is, this is so important because it gives structure, but the teaching is where it really happens.
And, and if you didn't see what we saw, you wouldn't know, uh, the depth of what was really going on in the classrooms. Because you really do, when you can walk around a school and see student work that looks like this, it is, it is amazing.
And for Ellie, who's at the middle high school, it's great for her, and we're going to do the same thing. We're going to take some people and go to the high school, middle high school and, and walk around. Because that's how you really, you know it's happening when you actually see it.
And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to join the vertical team in the first place is because we could finally get an understanding of what was happening before the kids come to us. And from all the way from when they're five, um, until they reach us, you know, in the middle high school. So, um, getting a sense of, you know, wh- what they're going, what skills they're learning, uh, you know, bef- in elementary school is so informative and helpful to us at the middle high school too. So, so that was great. Is great, it continues to be helpful.
Applaud you for ta- making that effort and embracing that and using that information to build, yeah.
Well, it is also important for administrators and, you know, people helping teachers to sort of have a similar, um, way of looking at the information too. So that, you know, we can, um, really provide the necessary kind of support and, and acknowledgement. I mean, I wrote a note to the Pembroke staff, you know, after talking a little bit about, you know, what, what we saw and why, you know, what we were there and how impressed we were with, uh, a few very specific things that I know they've been working on. You know, because they are working hard. They're working really hard. And, uh, you know, it doesn't take much to get, make them, you know, let them know you, 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 we all appreciate it. And we do, we all appreciate it.
Um, so on that note, I, I figured it would be good for you to take a look at some student work. Um, and I don't know, Kate, if you want to speak to this unit. Definitely, so, um, this is Pearly work. Um, the photo in the middle is, um, from an author study in kindergarten that the teachers are currently working on. They're studying an author, Mo Willems, who is fantastic. And they are reading three different, um, books, three different series that Mo William writes. They're reading, listening, thinking, deeply talking, comparing, contrasting the stories within the series and then the three different types of series. Um, this is a knuffle bunny, I don't know if you can read that. Which are, they're fantastic books. I highly recommend you reading them. Um, so the, the kids are then illustrated and picking their favorite knuffle bunny of the three texts in the middle. And the two, um, the, on the left and right are a first grade realistic fiction unit that they did earlier in the year, where again, they were learning about what is realistic fiction, how to write, um, in that genre. And, um, they're comparing a text, um, on the left and right.
Did you learn about realistic fiction when you were in first grade? Comparing and contrasting versions, which is a standard, by the way, very important one.
And these photos are first grade, um, they're currently doing this informational unit, um, habitats. Um, so they're learning about all these different habitats you see listed, bulleted there. Um, we got great resources, um, for the teachers to use and the kids to actually read informational texts at their level, which, you know, was hard a while ago, but now there's more and more texts available. So they're incorporating a lot of beautiful artwork. The kids are absolutely loving this unit. They're, um, so it's really integrating science, reading and writing. And, um, they're working on making their own habitat books. So the students are researching, they're, um, they're, uh, writing their source from where they're getting their information, so they're starting to do that in first grade. Um, which you're probably happy to know that, Ellie, that that's. So again, yeah, the teachers are really, once they're into them and they're seeing the children's reaction and how motivated they are as readers and writers, they're really, really loving them.
I love the artistic ability to. This is in the hallway, so if you come to Pearly, go and take a look. So next year at the Pembroke School, um, Kate and Maureen will both be full-time. Kate has been half-time at Pearly, but we're, uh, the Title I funds are moving to Pembroke. So the Title I funds will be used to support the other part of Kate's salary. So, um, we think Kate's, Kate's been awesome working part-time and.
I know, so how is that going, does that work out for you?
I'm very excited, yeah.
She's been wanting to work.
I've been planting some seeds.
Yeah, she's been wanting to do this, we just haven't had the ability. Yeah, she's been wanting to do this, we just haven't had the ability, um, you know, to, to do it. So. We're really excited, you know, we're really excited. And that'll be so nice for the, again, the transition with Pearly and Pembroke teachers coming together. And knowing that they have these two great resources, you know, some of which, they, at least one of which they know and have worked with. Um, so we're, we're really excited about it. We think we're gonna really be able to move this, you know, forward, you know, with the support of both of uh, these ladies. They're very talented. We're excited.
So we have a little bit of transition here up into um, Pembroke School, same topic of, of nonfiction.
Right. Sure. So uh, in the middle is a second grade unit and um, it was. About informational text or nonfiction. So they learned what is nonfiction and then the features of nonfiction. But while they're doing it, they're also reading about the Emperor Penguins, which is part of their science content. And they're also reading about um, life cycles and they're reading about um. They read like Frog and Toad, so they learned a little bit about um, the life cycle again. And then they use the Gail Gibbons. Um, from plant to seed or seed to plant.
I can't remember. I do too.
But they loved that unit. Um, they had a great time and not only are they, you know, learning just the features and what is nonfiction, but. They're learning deeply how to read nonfiction um, through these really rich um, texts. And then the final result is they write expert books. So they write their own nonfiction piece. On something that they feel they are an expert at. And they use the nonfiction features in their own writing. So that's the middle. Um, and then there's some fourth grade work. Um, the, one of the model units in fourth grade, which is really interesting, is they study the US uh, regions. And I actually used to teach fourth grade and we would teach the regions, um, kind of. You know, maybe like over three months, we teach all the regions. And this I kinda like because they're, they're doing different regions at different times in the year. Um, and they're learning that every region has natural resources and has different culture and has physical features and. Now they're really learning more in-depth. Um, they start with their own region. Uh, the northeast and then they learn about the other regions and see, you know, why is a region a region? You know, that, that big um, essential question that we always wanna, why are we learning this? Um, and what, um, why is it important? And I think kids really um. Gain that knowledge a little bit better in, in this way.
The Common Core standards, you've heard before, have a lot more of a focus in, on nonfiction. You know, it used to be not the case. I mean, you'd occasionally, if you were doing a, a sort of a theme and it had a content to it, you, you know, you'd bring in. Examples for students, but they really read, most of what they read was really sort of fiction, you know, novels, you know, some of that. So. So you can see that that shift is happening. And one of the things we did see when we went into the classrooms. Is um, the kids that were writing these expert books. And how they, you know, I'm on chapter three of my expert book. So they had to, you know, do research and there were certain, you know, bits, bits of content they had to cover. But uh, you should've seen how proud they were and how.
Well, give me an idea of what they were expert at.
Well, um.
What are experts at raising a puppy?
Okay.
So they chose something within their world, their context, you know, and compared.
So they had to read all kinds of things and learn about it.
Expert at, you know, a sport that they did or, or an activity that they do, or, you know. So we had, there was quite a range, honestly. And it was so nice to see them say that they, you know, were an expert at something. And they could really talk about it. And it was just.
It's less about the topic, it's more about the process that they have to go through and how they access the information. Formulate, you know, a, a way to present it.
They could do it too, that this is something I can definitely do. I can talk about this.
They were very proud of their.
And when they, when they understand that um, they are an author, they, that transfers to, oh, when I read a nonfiction. Book or article, it's an author that has planned this and he's put in these features for a particular reason. So now when I'm reading nonfiction, I need to pay attention to all of these. So it, it's kind of all uh, related.
That's really neat. And this was fourth grade?
Second.
Second.
Second?
That's the other thing, the Common Core standards have gotten a little lower than it might've been in the past.
Second grade.
Well, you saw some of those part questions.
Yeah, I know.
Right? And we, we were questioning like, this is sixth grade, this is third grade. So. There's no doubt, I mean, when we talk about middle school math, we were having a conversation about this the other day. You know, the, the stuff that used to be done in eighth grade is, is definitely now moving down into sixth and seventh because they. There, it's no longer starting in ninth grade anymore. So, you know, it's definitely where the standards are going.
So here's a quick look at poetry, um, across the grade levels. And um, poetry is something that. Um, is definitely within the standards and um, just as important, you know, we always talk about the different genres. You know, it has its, its own weight and its own place within the ELA curriculum. So we've talked a lot about that this year. How do we build in poetry? What does it look like? And how, you know, how do students read it, but also write to it as well? And so we have some high school, high school unit that, that you'll be interested, just keep this in your mind when you. See how we talk about the high school poetry unit in just a few minutes. Um, the other big change I would, I would have to say is the, the focus on research and writing. Which is something that is in every grade level. But obviously, first grade research and writing looks completely different from tenth grade research and writing. And so it's really, for us, it's been that process of looking at, you know, what's appropriate for a specific grade level. And how can we ensure that we're teaching the, the students what they need to know? When is it, when is the right time to teach in-text citation? When is the right time to teach how to use multiple sources and what to look for and. How to weigh out different sources in your research and in your writing. And so you can see some examples there of some of the work that was done over the course of this year. And this, this work comes from Pembroke. Our students' work. So uh, we're proud of that. We, we definitely, you see a lot of different things now that you may not have seen before. And I could certainly see that with the shift into um, building in other content areas when you're talking about research. And we're doing research in science and a science topic or doing research in social studies and how you, how do you add writing to that and what does it look like? So ultimately, we want our kids to be able to go up into middle and high school and understand that research writing looks the same. In ELA, cause one of the things that we've always heard, and I was an ELA teacher myself, you know, you teach it in ELA, but. It, the same skills don't always transfer into social studies for some reason. We don't know why. So it's really about giving uh, students more exposure in that practice. Of, of learning how to do all this work within whatever content it is you're, you're studying. So I thought I would just give you a quick little snippet on um, elementary literary analysis and writing. What does that look like? Um, and so, I, I don't know if you wanna speak to um, the Tommy DiPaolo unit really quickly, but basically, this, this. Kind of sums up what it would look, what literary analysis, we talk about it, but this is what it looks like in the lower grade levels.
So this is grade two?
Yes.
And um, um, they really enjoyed this model unit, the um, teachers and the students. Um, because they really got to understand Tommy DiPaolo as a, an author and they saw all his works. And they saw all the different um, ways that you can um, you can write as an author. Um, and also it was nice because there are books that are kind of at different levels, so all kids could access texts at different levels. Um, and then also come together and reading the same text. They had that community building and. Um, discussions that they really enjoyed. Um, so it was, it was a great unit.
So this unit, we're, we're beginning at the middle school, but this is also literary analysis, but obviously you can see Tom Sawyer is a completely different type of text. And so that is um, a much more demanding text, if you wanna think of it that way.
Yeah. Um, well, yeah, this is something that um, the seventh grade teachers are uh, planning on doing this spring. Um, to um, kind of bring some, bring some new life to um, the adventures of Tom Sawyer. And um, it involves uh, not only reading Tom Sawyer, but also um. Reading a bit of excerpts from a biography about Mark Twain and sort of comparing. Um, the events and settings in his life to the events and settings he writes about in Tom Sawyer. And there's like a comparison going on there and they're gonna talk about the, the, the truth of that in the fiction, if there is any. And, you know, cause the narrator's biased, obviously. And so that's kind of interesting. And then it's supposed to culminate in this um. Uh, presentation that the students will give, um, but it, it's supposed to be meant like in a conference setting. Um, and it's like a student conference on the truth. And uh, so that's the idea.
Little schoolers love to talk about.
So that's uh, what they're hoping to do. So it's kinda nice. And you know, we were talking earlier about um, you know. One of the, well, one of the things I like about it that we were talking about earlier was that, um, you know, they're not just reading the um. The classic fiction story, but they're also incorporating other uh, media, including nonfiction. But also there's art in this unit. There's uh, you know, pictures to look at and kinda analyzing what's going on with that. And um, I think even a little music and everything too. So it's kinda makes it.
A different way to sum it up, like a TED Talk is a completely different spin on the whole thing. So you, you have the voice. You know, you have to lend your own voice to it. And voice is something that we always talk about is so difficult to teach. But you have to kind of bring it out in your students. And so this allows teachers that, you know, that, the capacity for that a little bit more.
Right.
So thinking back to the poetry a moment ago, uh, this is a poetry and art unit that's done um, in the ninth grade. And uh, we were so excited to be able to go in and take a look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went to see that last spring. Um, it was really neat. And um, so in this unit, um. They're reading poems, but uh, actually before, well, no, they re- they're reading poems and they're learning about uh, the vocabulary of poetry. Um, the, the literary terms, devices, things like that. But in this unit, they also look at pieces of art, um. You know, art that's known, like this one here, um, and analyze that as well. And use the same skills they're using in, to visually analyze, to then go look at a poem and sort of visually analyze that. So it's, again, I like that mixing of media, um, and uh, which is also, you know, Common Core, Park, all of that comes together. And it's great practice for, for them for all of that, but beyond, for, for life too, I think. Especially college, because the whole purpose of a, you know, the work that we do is to get kids college and career ready and. And there won't be a college class that our students take.
Yeah.
Where they won't have to be a literary critic or an analysis, uh, or do an analysis of some kind of. Literature or time period or even artistic criticism. That certainly can be the case for many college-bound students. And so we wanted to give them some practice with that as well.
This one um, culminated in a analysis paper, uh, where they compared the paint, their analysis of the painting to the analysis of a poem. That was related and compared, contrasted in an essay, so.
Nice.
Pretty successful.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it was great for the kids, just to see them look at art and talk about it and write in their journals about it and analyze it and, you know, it's great. Fun for us.
Yeah.
And, and that, that is pretty much uh, the work that we have been doing. Um, one of the things that we're planning to do is survey teachers for feedback on pacing and timeline decisions for next year. You know, would you take this unit and move it in September? You know, would you add some things to it? What, do you need more graphic organizers? You know, how can we facilitate that?
Um, we can do that in Al- Alice. We can move it in Alice too. So that's the nice thing about having that all.
Easy move for us, but.
What is Alice?
Alice is, Alice is the program that, that you all supported us, uh, purchasing that allows the curriculum to sort of be put into a. Electronic format. So, um, you know, teachers could access at any time and uh. It's really particularly good for new teachers who, when they first come in, you know, kinda wonder, they might see the textbooks or whatever in the room and think. At what, you know, and this just gives them a framework that they can work from. So that's a project we've been working on, you know, strategic plan for three years. You know, and it'll be an ongoing, cause curriculum's always evolving. You know, we'll never get to the point where we say, stamp done, you know, it's just not gonna happen.
And so um, next year, we'll also be looking at student work. So all the work that you saw there is the work that we will. Start to look at to determine what's, you know, what's appropriate at each grade level and, you know, when we see students doing this, how do we. Ensure that we're supporting them or, you know, when we see students that are writing like this, how can we ensure that we're giving them. Um, additional things to write about and to kind of build their writing skills um, in different ways. So we'll definitely be doing a lot of that. Um, we're also hoping to coordinate some literacy nights at the new Pembroke next year. And um, similar in a sense to what you saw with the creativity showcase for those of you that went to that last year for the ninth graders. We wanna be able to have some things for parents to come in and take a look at, presentations that the students are able to give and kind of share that, what they're learning. In a different way for, for all people to see.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, I think so too.
What is, I mean, curriculum obviously always evolving, but what's sort of the lifespan of this? I'm gonna call it a project. I know that's not the right word. Obviously, there's been an incredible amount of work. When, is it, is it five years? Is it three years? Is it ten years that you would kind of have to redo this process?
Well, it depends. I mean, the state adopted these standards in twenty eleven. The last time that the state adopted standards was about ten or fifteen years prior to that. So you, you, you could honestly say with a ten to fifteen year time span, luckily for everyone involved.
You don't wanna do this every three years.
It's an incredible amount of work. So um, you definitely, um, that's why we had to take the time to really figure out what, what is this supposed to look like. You know, make sure that we build something strong from that. But I would say ten to fifteen years, that's, that's been the, the going. The going rate, I would say, for, of change when it comes to standards. But, you know.
So it is, it is defined around kind of new standards being developed.
It is.
And what the research is, but it, but it's really, um, instruction is good teaching, right? So I mean, what we're finding, I mean, those of us have been around. Teaching and learning for a long time. The pendulum does swing and what was called something else is now called something else. But at the end of the day, you know, good teaching, we'd all know it if we saw it, right? And it's really about, you know, making sure that. You know, the teachers know what it is the students need to know and be able to do and that they have a really effective way to measure who's learning it and who's not. And then, you know, it's, it's really less about what, it's much more about how. When you say ladies, that's, that's the, that's the most important work we do is. Not only defining for people what they need to teach, but helping and supporting them in their teaching of it and assessing of it. Yeah, so it's, it is, they're all interrelated. But it's an, I mean, this is the work. This, this is why we open our doors every day. If we don't get this right, we won't see the impact on student performance. And it's not just about test scores. I mean, that's a measure. But if you walked into the schools and you watched what was going on, you could say, I can see kids are learning. Right? That, that's what we're.
Can tell you what they like.
That's what we're, you know, that's what we're, we're trying to impact. And I, you know, I, I s- I always look at the teacher talk, right? So I've been here eight years and I can remember when we first started, even before we started these projects. You know, you could talk to teachers and they would, you know, be, tell you what they're doing and it was always really good stuff. But now when you talk to teachers, it's like they have a different level of expertise. They, they have a, they have a different way of explaining what it is they're doing and why. And how it connects. And that's different. And that's how you know that the district is evolving. You know, it is evolving. And one person at a time, but it's evolving, right? Um, and you know, it, it is a complicated, as Julie said, it's complicated because you don't know that. A training makes the difference or, you know, is the coaching making a difference? Is it having available resources making the difference? It all makes a difference. Um, but I think the most important thing is to keep talking to the teachers and talking to the kids. Because the kids will tell you what they're learning and what the, and, and the administrators, you know, this teacher evaluation being in the classrooms a little more. Is also useful. I mean, it all does tie together. It's just a lot at once. And I think in three years. Right? The trajectory won't be this. It'll, it'll be, you know, maybe this and then a little bit of change. And then everybody, you'll see that it'll be easier for people, cause it really has been a lot, very, you know, very.
For elementary teachers especially, I always have to say, they have math too. So when the state adopted ELA, they adopted new standards for math. So it's been this, you know, massive amount of.
And they've changed. They've changed them. So it's, you know, it's just you, you get yourself sort of thinking, these are the units I'm gonna teach and then oops.
Not adjust, you have to readjust, cause now it's calling for something a little bit more.
But it's gonna, it's gonna stabilize. We already see it, I think, a little bit, you know, and. Once you have a lot of things in place, then adding something new is not such a big deal. But when you're building everything and putting it together in a framework, you know, that really doesn't exist now, that's, that's the work these guys have been doing, the Yeoman's job. And that they've been doing for the last several years and will continue to do, right? I mean, there'll always be something new.
Yeah.
But it's very exciting. It's very exciting work. And I thank the teachers because they've been so willing to.
I know.
Let people come into their classrooms. I mean, they, you know, I mean, it's, you know, I think that's another thing that I noticed is the professional culture. Has really, you know, beginning to transform itself. You know, our mentor, our mentor program has, you know. Teachers going in and doing instructional rounds in veteran teachers' classrooms and they're thrilled to have the young teachers come in and. You know, watch what they're doing. I mean, it's not those days here of the door gets closed and I do my thing and, you know, kinda. You know, those my ideas are my ideas and this is my way of doing it. You know, there's a lot more collaboration and a lot more comfort with, you know, people coming in and uh. You know, there's a lot more collaboration and a lot more comfort with, you know, people coming in and uh, you know, teaching each other. In fact, the union has asked that one of the professional development days that we have, could we make that a day where teachers in the, in the school district could make proposals of something they would like to do to train their colleagues? Something that they feel they have an expertise in, or something, something that we say, these are the things your colleagues want, is anybody interested in, in doing a, doing a session on a PD day? Sort of like a conference, you know, you'd choose like little workshops that you might like to go through. I mean, that would never have happened, you know, years ago, would you agree? So, that's all good stuff.
Great idea.
Yeah, that came from them. Thank you so much, you guys.
So great.
And thanks for staying out so late.
He's really great.
Okay, now we have the Pembroke transition.
So I gave you a, a document. And this has been like giving birth to this thing, but um, you know, as you remember, one of the, the things that we've been doing on a monthly basis has been doing these updates. And I guess we had an aha moment when we saw the questions that a lot of parents had brought forth before the PTA meeting that um, were exactly all the questions we've been talking about. So, we were like, aha, maybe they're not watching the school committee meetings. And um, so, we decided we'd take a different, you know, tact, and the personnel, uh, the public relations subcommittee's been very helpful in coming up with a strategy. Um, so what, what we did is we took the, the major questions that have come up in terms of themes. Um, and then what, what we're going to do is, we're on the Pembroke site, there's going to be actually a place that's very prominent that you can go. And that, I think in talking to Barry the other day, what we sort of figured out was maybe if we could, Barry could uh, take each of these major themes, and then the little questions that come underneath them, if he could put the theme and people could just click on that, and then what would show up would be the, the, the questions that are in that, in that, you know, theme. Um, and then we, we're talking about when some new information is posted, we wanna figure out some way to alert people that there's new information. Um, but we like to use this site also to post updated pictures, um, important dates. Um, and uh, so, as you can see, you know, this is sort of where we are right now. Um, sort of new, I think, on the first page, uh, there are some dates that we just wanna make sure you're aware of, Margaret and I. Oh, Margaret, did you get one of these? Sorry, I finished it today. Um, so uh, Wednesday, May sixth, from six thirty to eight, the fifth, the fifth to sixth grade parents, cause there's, there's still some anxiety that they're, they're feeling. Um, but, you know, rightly so, you know, it's, it's a change for, for their child. Um, so we're gonna have a parent, a pin night kind of thing, and, and talk about um, some of the things that they might wanna continue to still talk about. Um, on Tuesday, June twenty second, and this is still a time to be determined, there's gonna be a series, you're gonna see a series of sort of closing, closing and cer- ceremonies. So that particular one on June twenty second, which is a Tuesday, uh, that actually is the day before the students' last day. The students' last day is the twenty third. So this'll be a ceremony for the current Pembroke families, um, where they can come and say goodbye to the schools, and we're gonna have some, some details to follow. Um, do we, we didn't have a time set for that, did we Margaret?
No.
No. Um, but then on Wednesday, the twenty third, you know, just before the students leave, um, this'll be just a student community gathering, just a little, you know, celebration. Um, because we wanted to, to have, have, parents have the opportunity to be part of it, but we also wanted to have some things that were sort of just special for the students. Um, so you'll notice that both Pembroke and Pearly, there's something like that. Margaret does, Margaret, the staff, staff do a wonderful job on this, and you're more than welcome to come to this, even if you're not a parent. They do a celebration of growth, which they do all day long, um, I love going and, and seeing what's going on in the classrooms. But as part of this year's uh, program, they're gonna build in some kind of ways that um, parents and uh, um, students can sort of reflect on, you know, it's still gonna be open as a school, as a preschool, but it's not necess, it's not gonna be a K one. So, and they, those are being planned, and then on the last day of school, same thing, there'll be a community gathering. And then in terms of family and community-
Just for timing, Carol.
I'm sorry, yep.
Um, at Pearly, I'll have the community gathering in the morning, because I would-
Oh, so you're gonna be at, okay, well, that's fine, cause that's just for students, but maybe you can just tell me how you'd wanna change that. And then in terms of family and community gatherings, there's gonna be a couple. So on Septem- on Saturday, June twentieth, from nine to one, this is sort of a community saying goodbye to Pembroke. So, this is a chance for anybody who went to Pembroke, or anybody in town, or any family member that wants to come into the building. They'll have the opportunity, Margaret always says, to gently write um, on the walls, uh, with a Sharpie, you know, a remembrance that they have, or some kind of message, um, you know, with the Sharpie marker. Um, we're not gonna be destroying the area with, you know, spray paint and all, it's just gonna be a tasteful, you know, if you have a, if you wanna go in and write a little message, you can drop by anytime. Obviously, the students have to come with a parent, but this isn't just for Pembroke, current Pembroke families. Lots of people went to, um, you know, to Pembroke in the past, so it would be a sort of a community thing. And then, um, on Wednesday, August twenty sixth, from four PM to eight PM, families and, and their students, their children, would be able to come and tour the new school. And Margaret's thinking that maybe one of the things she might wanna do is have some of the fifth grade students who are B tour guides, which obviously we'd have to train them, but, so if Mrs., if anybody wants to do that, the parents can, you know, ask their child to send a little note to Mrs. Maher, offering to, to do it. But, you know, it'll, it won't really be a, a meet and greet with the teacher, it'll just more be, you know, just come in and see the school, and here's where this is and that is, and, and um, these are all things, you know, Margaret and I just would plan to be there, and, you know, anybody else who wants to come. But we wouldn't be expecting staff to necessarily be there at that moment. We're trying to get the staff into the school in early August, that's the plan right now, once everything gets installed. And then, so that, this would be like the week right before, so, you know, we feel like the teachers would probably feel comfortable having their rooms ready, you know, by that, by that point. All of the things that are gonna be set up are gonna be set up by then. Um, and then the day that school opens, no, sorry, the professional development day, so that's uh, August thirty first.
Whatever that Monday is.
It's the thirty first. Then um, Margaret, we'll have our morning breakfast and things that we do in the district, but then in the afternoon, Margaret will schedule a time where teachers, uh, families can just come in and meet the teacher, you know, check in and meet the teacher, so. Um, so we have a lot of things planned, um, that I think will be nice for the communities, beginnings and endings. Um, but I just wanted to call those atten, those meet, those dates to your attention, because maybe you wanna put them on your calendar and be, be at as many of them as you can, be welcome.
Sure.
Um, and then, you know, so I, we won't go over all of these, uh, because some of them you know about, right? But there were, there have been some new things that um, you know, that we have talked about, uh, that you won't have known about. So the safety and security ones, I think you pretty much have heard us talk about. Um, and then the security system of how we're gonna do it at Pearly, remember we talked about, everybody's gonna buzz in at a different door and all of that. Um, some of the logistics uh, are things that we have talked about. Um, some people have been wondering about, you know, will everything be available when the school opens? You know, or anything's gonna be restricted, not, no, the budget, the plan is um, ahead of schedule. Uh, the only thing is the fields, I just want people to know that, you know, that for that first year, there won't be accessibility to the fields, cause those aren't coming online till the summer of sixteen. But the, the two playgrounds will be open, the grounds around the school will be open, and everything within the school will be open. Um, I talked about touring the new school, uh, orientation and pin night, those, and then drop off and pickup. So this is something that we have, we didn't have the last time we came, but we do have it now. And in your little um, packet, you have a little map, right? Um, and so, Margaret and I just wanted to point out um, something that actually uh, was changed, we think changed for the better when we met with our, our little group, the safety committee. So if you hold, if you hold the map with the, with the uh, driveway coming up, so, when you first come up, you see a series of parking lots, right, so you see two sort of together, right, and one at the end, right? So the first, so it says in the middle, teacher's parking lot. We're changing that to, that's where the parents, the, the parents that, that are gonna park will park. And the reason being, so you notice when you come up the road, and if this was in color, it'd be easier to see, but you come up the road if you're a car, right, you continue, 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 and then right up near where that line gets a little darker, do you see where the line gets a little, do you see the access road coming down to Elm Street? Okay, right about there, that becomes a one-way. So if you're queuing, you're stuck if you get that far, alright? So you, you go around, you loop around, and then you, you come back out. If you're a bus, you come in, you go, you come in the bus loop and you go around, but you notice that there's no traffic that intersects with that middle parking lot. And so, so, the reason that that's important is because if you're a kindergarten parent, you won't queue. You're, the directive for you as a kindergarten parent is that you will walk by the nice little sidewalk that's nice and safe there, and you will pick your child up by the kindergarten end of the building. And then if you have a fifth grader or a fourth grader, they'll be able to come meet you in the parking lot. But otherwise, you see there, that's, there's, that's just pedestrian traffic, that, that should have no interference from any cars. If, if we had it over here in this lot, that we couldn't say that. We, we would, we potentially could have moving, moving vehicles, we, we don't really wanna do that. We wanna have people park, kindergarten parents go in and get their child, and um, if you're gonna pick up and you wanna, you don't wanna park in one of the lots here, there'll be enough spaces, then you get in the queue line and you go around.
But if this isn't teacher's parking, are there gonna be enough teachers?
Here, so teacher's parking's up here, there's some here, and then there'll be some in this parking lot, there'll be plenty of spaces, yeah. But that, we wanted to say that for parents, could, because there's that, there's that um, the sidewalk and, and it's just sta, it's more stationary than it would be if we moved it down to the other end. So, information that, that this will, this gives parents information about, I put in what were the considerations. So there's no bus and car interaction, like there is right now. Um, there will be opportunity for parents to park or queue, choice. Uh, kindergarten students will not queue. We want the parents to, like they do at Pearly now, to get out of their car, be there, make eye to- contact with the teacher and their child, and then walk them safely to their car. Free of any traffic issues. Um, uh, I'd explain, you're, if you wanna queue, if you wanna pick up at the front door, then you've got a queue. And Margaret, um, because she wants to ensure that this, this right kid gets in the right car, right? The authorized person is responding, they, they will do, they will do a, a system similar to what they have now. And in fact, Mike Walsh, who uh, knows people's numbers by now, he said, don't change the number system, I, cause I already know, you know, who number three twenty-three is. So, you know, the teachers are giving us some input into that, but um, um, and then buses, I, I said, will pick up at the side entrance. You know, I think, you know, we've had some challenges forever at Pembroke, but we did make some recent, recent changes, which have resulted, you know, keeping the buses separate from the, from the cars, that has resulted in some success, would you say, Margaret? It's the most successful thing we've come up with yet. Um, but it gives me, it gives me great, like, confidence that the system that they designed, especially with that longer queuing line, really should function the way they expect it to, and we shouldn't have any of the problems that we, we currently have. Um, in terms of, you know, drop off times being staggered, we did, we have varied, uh, the bus, the buses getting out a little bit earlier than the, but, but we haven't made any of those, we haven't made any of those final decisions, but we might consider it. But people wanted to know, would it be done by grade? Like, would the third grade be dismissed for, no, we wouldn't do it that way, we would do it bussers and walkers, if we, if we did it at all. Um, another question that we've been working on uh, extensively is before and after school care. Um, so, you know, both Pearly and Pembroke will have an after, before and after school program next year, we talked about it recently on the preschool, right? But, but we're definitely gonna do it at the Pembroke. Um, but we're going to do, cause there's gonna be more children participating, um, we're, to make it more efficient, and actually, we think to, to give more enrichment options, we're actually going to utilize two of the people who currently work with the extended day program. And one is going to be responsible for planning extended day, and the other is going to be responsible for planning enrichment. So the two can intersect, but one person isn't responsible for both. Um, and we think that's gonna, gonna work well, we've spoken to the people that are involved, they're very excited about it. Um, and one thing we heard from one of the parent coffees is uh, the convenience hour, which, you know, is, has been utili, utilized by parents. Um, you know, we had said that they apparently had to um, sign up well in advance, and some parents have felt that that wasn't, one parent in particular made us understand that sometimes that's not possible, and Margaret had said, well, we just need to make sure there's enough staff. So we, we agreed that if we, we could offer it till four o'clock, but you'd have to give a forty-eight hours notice. So that way, it's not unreasonable for the parent to try to create a schedule that they don't know in advance, and it's not difficult for the school staff, because at forty-eight hours, we can make sure there's a, an additional staff person there if we had a need, you know, for more people, so. Um, so we, we've been trying to listen to what the, the customer wants, and uh, uh, we, we think that we, this capitalizes on the benef, the good things that we feel are going on with those programs. There, as you see, they're revolving count, they're very popular. Um, but at the same time, we, you know, we wanna, we wanna improve upon it as we consolidate it. So, that, um, that people had questions about the price, uh, that, that we haven't, we hadn't planned to, we haven't talked to you about it, and we hadn't planned to increase the price. Um, hours would remain the same, uh, security, same thing, you'd be bu, you'd be buzzed in like you are now. The doors would remain, um, remain locked, and then an interesting question was, will the kindergarteners and the sixth graders sort of, you know, mush together? And uh, one of the advantages of having a longer grade span is that you have the opportunity to create those opportunities. Um, but as we acknowledge in here, there are some times when you, you wouldn't put them together, and then there are other times when it's wonderful for older students to be working with younger students. Um, so that, the staff will be very aware of those things, and will make sure parents, you know, know exactly what the philosophy's gonna be. But we actually see it as a benefit, as opposed to something that's, something that's negative, right? Um, sixth grade, I think we covered everything that we've talked about before, the only sort of, I'd say, outstanding question is the math. Um, you know, people are still wondering about that, so one of the things that we're trying to do is to gather some information and really think it through. Um, and so I, I've been getting some information on math in the middle school anyway, uh, from the listserv, and um, you know, we've been reading some articles and, you know, looking at it, and, and one of the things that parents were really good about helping us with. Cause at first it sounded like it was more an issue of, like, who my kid was with, which I'm not saying that there isn't still some of that. But the biggest thing that came out that I thought, wow, this is, this is really helpful, is their worry is, particularly for those people who have had older children, and the rigor of the seventh grade math curriculum is such, you know, the hope was that kids would get through uh, pre-algebra into algebra. And people are worried that if they don't level, or pace, whatever you wanna call it, that kids will not be ready to do the se, to compete at the seventh grade level, won't be willing to do that math. So one of the things we're doing is we're engaging the, you know, the teachers, you know, the, this, throughout, through uh, Julie, and through the vertical team, and Mrs. Utter, the department head, and, and the, the teachers who teach at the middle school, like, how can we make sure that doesn't happen if we don't level? Right, cause it's a, it's a fair concern. Um, so, those are things that we're, we wanna do it right, we wanna think about all the angles rather than be reactionary. So, we don't have a firm answer for that yet. Um, but I will tell you, from the stuff that I've been um, reviewing from other districts, they don't group in sixth grade, they don't level in sixth grade. They tend to level in seventh, but more level only in eighth. So it's, it's just interesting, you know, how, how that, how that gets looked at. And we actually had a mom who came to the coffee, who is actually a middle school teacher, who spoke out against leveling because of the negatives around it, and the fact that it doesn't necessarily, it, she hasn't, it didn't get necessarily accomplish what we, you know, sometimes the, the negatives outweigh the positives, right? So how can you mitigate that? So that's, she, she actually, I think, was very helpful, don't you think, Margaret?
Yeah.
I, I found um, Mrs. Utter to be very um, informative when I had questions, when my child was going into, uh, I, I-
When my child was going into, uh, I, I wasn't sure if the current, um, program he was in, if he was gonna be able to, like, get ready for college. She, she was telling me, "Okay, so now when he's in ninth grade, he'll do this, and when he goes into tenth grade, he'll do that," like, she made me feel so much better, and I'm telling you, she is so good about talking to parents.
So that's why we're engaging her, that's why we're engaging her.
Yeah, she just made me feel so much better because she had everything under control.
Well, it's nice to hear.
It was like, this is, you know, this is what will happen, and it was, so far, it's happened.
Yeah, she's been very helpful to our family as well. And we're, and we're looking at the middle school curriculum, so a lot of the newer curriculums, as you're seeing, that, you know, they, they tend to, um, really promote differentiation. They really, like, what do you do for kids? How do you challenge the students who are showing you that they really get this particular skill? What can you do to support students who might need more work in this? You know, so sometimes, you know, those kind of curriculums laying things out are also helpful, so it doesn't rest on the teacher necessarily. Um, so, um, and then the sixth grade other things, and unless there's something you see there, I mean, we've pretty much talked about those. Um, uh, lockers, people want to know, so kindergarten, um, kindergarten has, as you'll see when you go on your tour again, kindergarten has cubbies in the room, and, uh, everyone else has, uh, lockers on each floor. Um, people have asked about, you know, is it gonna be air-conditioned, you know? So there are areas of the school that are, the library, media center, the computer lab, obviously, 'cause you don't want the computers overheating, and the main office. Um, but every-
You don't want the principal overheating?
Yeah, that's right, that's right, at least for that reason.
You don't have to worry about that. Um, as an aside, today was the only day I said to, uh, Mrs. Collins, "I'm hot, write this down, I am never hot, I'm actually hot today."
That's right, she usually wears her gloves in my office, she's cold. Um, so, it, but it is this thing called humidity controlled. So, and there are actually, it's, like, there are actually buttons in each classroom that tells the teachers when they should open their window, or when they shouldn't have their windows open because of the climate in the building. Uh, there are some ceiling fans in the cafeteria and the gymnasium, obviously keep air circulating. Um, but, uh, you know, so there's some information there. We talked about STEM, it's some of the activities, so some of that is in here. Um, you know, co- complete list of new amenities, so I explain, you know, sort of, obviously, I used a few words in there that were embellishing, but, you know, they're my opinion as to what, what you really do gain. I did speak a little bit about the colors in the building and the whole issue of the school in the woods. And, you know, how the first floor is really supposed to sort of depict the blue for the Pembroke, and some of the emerging sort of earthy kind of foliage, you know, stuff that's down there. The middle floor is really the trees and a lot of the foliage, there's a lot of greens, a lot of yellows, uh, on that floor. And then the top floor is sort of the, again, the, the, the trees, but more the sky, there's the purples and blues, and, um, so, you know, and the treehouse on the top floor, which we told you about, uh, which will have the Pembroke, uh, library furniture in it, and it looks out over the, um, the, uh, vegetated roof, uh, with a view of the solar panels, and, um, so I explained why a vegetated roof, 'cause I do expect that there probably will be some people who would ask questions about that, like, "Why did you do that?" Um, but a lot of that, just like the water feature that you're gonna see that comes down off of the cafeteria, that falls down into something that looks like a river or a brook of stones, that water is caught, caught in a cistern that gets used then to reef, to flush the toilets, and, so, they, they designed things so that they're in view of, of the, of the students. Um, particularly as they relate to sort of, like, Alana's always talking about giving back to them, how do you help the kids learn that part of their role is to give back, you know, and to the ha- the, the natural elements of their environment? And that student gardens is another example of things that get, are designed there to, to make that point. Um, we are adopt, we are gonna get Nutri, NutriKids, which is a, uh, point-of-sale, uh, program there, um.
Is that not at the high school?
It is, but Nutri, well, actually, there's a point of, there's a point-of-sale system, but it's not NutriKids, so both schools are getting NutriKids.
Oh, okay, so, we'll be uniform then?
Yep, and, you know, obviously, we wanna be able to keep the parents more invest, uh, not more, more involved in a, in having accessible information, like, "What's my child eating, what's my balance?" You know, I say, "If I overdraw my debit card, the bank sends me an immediate message saying, 'You're overdrawn.'" Well, that's kind of what we want this system to do, because, you know, as you know, because you adopted the policy on the kids getting cheese sandwiches, if they don't, if they have a big balance, right? This gives the pa- mu- mu- many parents will say, "Well, I didn't know."
No, right.
Well, now they're gonna know.
So we'll, we'll have, like, a password set up, like an headline?
Yeah, it's password protected and all that, yep. Yep, yep.
See, how much is in your account?
Yeah, that'd be terrific. Another question that we've been talking quite about, bit about is the foods policy there. You know, the, the nut-free, you know, because we're obviously merging two schools. So, um, you know, we, this is, this is our current thinking. Um, that, you know, the question, will peanuts and other nut, tree nuts be allowed in the school? So, the answer is yes, but there are the following conditions. So there's gonna be no peanut butter served in the cafeteria. We met with, uh, Joan and Heather, uh, on this, so, you know, we got, you know, other people's ideas on it. Um, the ki- but the kindergarten classes, 'cause the little kids are, are not as, um, attuned, or, you know, dealt. So the kindergarten classes and the section of the cafeteria where the kindergarten students will eat, uh, will be not restricted because of the age of the children. Um, in grades one through six, though, nut products will be allowed unless there's a child in the classroom that has a life-threatening allergy. Obviously, then you ha- we have to, we have to work on that. I mean, some people don't have a, it's not life-threatening, but, you know, maybe, maybe there's a way to sort of make them feel very included, but not, uh, take the, act, the privilege away from everybody else, you know? But if it's a life-threatening allergy, and we have some students for whom it is, you know, obviously, we, we're about safety for everybody. Um, in the cafeteria, there will be peanut-prohibited, um, tables available, as there are now, right, Margaret? And then, um, you know, when they have their celebrations of February and April, um, you know, we would, um, we would allow, you know, peanut products, again, unless there's a safety in, issue for students.
Why those two months, why February?
Well, that's-
Those are the two months we, I, we have parties with food.
Yeah, they don't, all, all their parties don't necessarily involve food. Uh, so then, of course, we get to the discussion about birthday celebrations, which is always a hot item. So, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to strike a happy medium here. And, you know, acknowledge that food is part of celebrations. But, you know, Heather and the regulations and the wellness committee, and, you know, we support the fact that, you know, we have to also ensure that, that we adhere to some kind of safety regulations. So we thought that something, and this would come to you, because this would be probably a policy thing. We thought that what we would recommend is that, um, uh, parents can bring food, you know, have food available, you know, to celebrate if they wish to. But maybe we would make suggestions as to what would be kind of appropriate. So, maybe you wouldn't bring in a dozen donuts from Dunkin' Donuts because there's sort of, there's issues with, you know, who touched them, you know, others, there's all kinds of things that are questionable. But if you wanted, you could, um, you know, uh, buy from the store the little, um, um, cupcakes that have, that are in the containers that are sealed. Do you know what I mean? Or you could, you could bring in a big, you know, you know, those fruit platters or whatever, you know, if they're in that plastic sealed container, and then the kids can do it with toothpicks. So, it, the, the, the goal here would be to, if they're in individual packages, if you wanna bring in Gogurts, if you wanna bring in, you know, cheese and crackers, you know, whatever would be on the list. And so Heather said that she'd be very happy to make a list of the things that, you know, and it would be, you know, it's not gonna be five things. You know, we're gonna try to, you know, figure out a way to get as many things that parent, 'cause we don't want it to be more expensive for parents.
So if somebody wants to do a cheese and cracker tray, they can order it through Heather?
That, that's right, yeah, I think that's what Heather is saying, is that she would be willing, you know, to work with parents on that. You know, if that was something they didn't wanna bother with, but they wanted to, to do it, you know, Heather said that she felt her staff would be able to help with it.
And then, and then we're sure that it's followed the safety guidelines, you know, because the kitchen operates with the safety guidelines.
And it saves your hands a trip?
It does, and, you know, again, we don't, we don't wanna, we don't wanna, we'd get it, but at the same time, you know, Heather's, you know, mindful as the director of, you know, food services, that, you know, we should keep in mind, you know, some health and safety, you know, recommendations while we're having this enjoyment. So, you know, maybe you can think a little more about that and see what you, which, how you feel about it. The other thing is the issue of snacks gets brought up. So right now, at the end of the snack, uh, end of the lunch period, students can buy snacks from the A-list. Um, and then, they also can buy ice cream a couple times a week. Now, let's be clear, that's a revenue generation, that's a revenue generator for Heather's program. Um, so, we don't wanna completely eliminate that, but we, we're trying to look at the, does it make sense to buy snacks after you eat? Because there are some kids for whom they don't buy the lunch, or they don't eat the lunch, 'cause they're waiting to get the Oreos after their lunch. So the question is, you know-
Is Oreos an A-list?
Because it's, it's about portion control.
Hydro-calorie pack.
Right, so, yeah.
But you'd probably-
What?
Half of one.
Yeah. So what, what we were thinking is that maybe what we would try to encourage would be that when students come into the school, rather than, I mean, parents want to pack their own snack, no problem. But if they don't wanna pack their own snack, their child could go to the cafeteria and say, you know, "Here, here's the snack," so they could buy a cheese stick or whatever would be there. And they could just get their snack then to be had during- Well, that-
I think they could use their account, I think they could use their account. So is there gonna be any restrictions on using the account?
Well, that we have to discuss, because I'm sure that the average parent doesn't want their child going and buying ten snacks. You know, um, but, you know, that's, that is, we, we talked about that being difficult, like, you know, kids who go in and buy three lunches. The poor parents are like, "What? I just put fifty dollars on your account." "Yeah, but I got three lunches for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday." Well, the money's gone. So we, we can't necessarily tell kids they can't buy certain things, so there would have to be some working with the families. And if the system alerted the families to what the child was buying on the account, it would make it a lot easier for the parent to work with their child.
Yeah, it'd be great for the parents to be able to see what their child is buying, and I, I don't-
But if you're gonna okay snacks, you know, to come out of that money, then you don't necessarily, the lunch, um, person isn't gonna know if I went through a second time with the snack, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, we weren't gonna have snacks available at lunchtime. We were gonna have them available in the morning for kids to purchase, and then when they go to class, if their, if their snack time is at ten o'clock in the morning, then they could just take out the snack they bought, instead of their parent necessarily worrying about buying them a snack. And then the ice cream is two times a week, and, and we're, we're recommending it be one time a week. Because we do have kids, I, I don't know, I think we're all a little anxious about that, because we do have kids who feel really bad that their parent won't send them the money to buy an ice cream. And yet, here we are talking about healthy foods, and yet, we're serving ice cream, even though it's fat-free.
Served is, is like the yogurt, yeah.
But, but it's still, it's got some sugar in it, you know, it, it's not completely, it's fat-free, but I don't know that it's sugar-free. Yeah, and it's, you know, and, and again, you know, I, I think it's, we don't wanna take all the fun away from the kids. But at the same time, we, you know, we're just trying to make a few tweaks that we think make more sense without, like I said, taking it away.
I mean, my children really used to look forward to the ice cream day.
And we're thinking that if it's one day, they might look forward to it more than having the trauma of some kids who want the ice cream have to deal with, of seeing other people get it two times a week. You know, then it, it would be a special treat, you know, once a day, and maybe some parents might feel a little better about giving their child the money if it was one day a week. So, you know, again, these are all the things we're thinking about.
If the software or the system would allow for parents to be able to say to the school, "I only want my child to buy one lunch," you know, I know we have a policy for two, but just, I mean, if the parents, if you could have any control over what your child is allowed to buy via-
I don't know, it's a good question, but-
The system.
But I don't know that our-
Plug in the number, if there's like a pop-up that comes up saying, "Only one lunch" or something.
Yeah, but I don't know if our cafeteria people would have the time, I mean, you're gonna be serving two hundred and one lunch, right?
Yeah, no, I'm picturing something very automated that wouldn't require people to-
We'll ask, we'll ask, I, we just don't, we don't know, we, NutriKids, I guess, was, it was definitely, um, you guys researched it, it was the best fit for us, it was probably the most highly recommended. Uh, it had the majority of features that we were, that we were looking, but I don't know the specifics as to-
It'll be an improvement, and, for sure, no matter what.
I think it will be an improvement, absolutely. Um, and then, um, I think the only other thing I just point out here is we, we have got a moving plan that we're putting in place. Mike has, uh, invited, uh, three vendors and interviewed, oh, oh, which one did you select, Joan?
Sterling.
Sterling, who, who is out of?
Chelmsford.
Out of Chelmsford.
I think so.
And, um, so there'll be information going to the teachers very sh- very soon. In fact, maybe, maybe we can have Mike come to the next meeting, perhaps, Mike, Mike come to the next meeting, just review the, the, the details of that. But we'll get information from teachers as to how they're supposed to pack, and we do have a plan to store the, um, boxes the teachers pack into one of the pods that we have emptied. Um, so that when the day comes that we're able to move the boxes, we're good to go. Um, and again, we're trying to have access for the classrooms for the teachers in late July, early August. And then the only other thing was the soil. People had expressed some concern about just wondering, is this arsenic thing gonna come up again? And the answer to that is no, happily. Uh, because the site is now considered clean, which means that all the dirt that contained the arsenic, um, that was visible, or, or, well, the building covers a lot of it, right? Because the, you know, it's obviously the building itself. But, um, all of the fields, all of the area that would sort of be not covered by something, um, has been, uh, dug down. Um, specific kind of a barrier has been laid on top of the arsenic soil, and then the clean fill has been put on top of it. So any of our new fields will, will all be, uh, clean. Um, so the contaminated soil that we were worried about before, uh, does not, does not exist uh, in a place where it could be harm, potentially harmful to anybody. Um, and then the Pembroke school's being demolished right after, right, it will take a while. It's not like it's just gonna come in with a wrecking ball and boom, it's gonna be done. But, you know, it will, it will happen, um, pretty soon after the school year. And, um, the fence will be around it, there'll be no accessibility. Um, it shouldn't affect anything going on in the new school, but, you know, um, it's, it's coming down, and it'll, and the fields will be planted, I believe, um, just before the, in the fall, early fall. Um, so, it's, it's gonna take a couple months, but it's not gonna be there in its current state very long after the school year concludes and that process gets started. Margaret, can you think of anything else that, I mean, we, we meet, we meet every, every week? So, I think we're-
Anything else we've talked about?
Yeah.
I'd say that.
That, yeah, I think, at this point, now we're getting into sort of more like the scheduling, the logistics of those kind of things, the, the sort of bigger things. You know, I mean, we're, we're doing a pretty good job with that, I think, you know, we got it, the math thing is still sort of a little out there. Uh, but we have a meeting coming up in early May, so we'll, you know, we'll obviously have, you know, determined what. Oh, the other thing is, the, and it's in here, the fifth grade, remember I told you we were starting conversations with the fifth grade teachers? And, uh, we're still talking with them, but we had a great meeting with them where we explored a lot of different kinds of options, and they, they were very interested in having some element of switching, uh, in the fifth grade. Uh, it might just be one subject, you know, where the, the students had experience, you know, um, with different teachers and different expectations, but, uh, that's an ongoing conversation. We, we, we definitely would like to see something happen, though, in, in fifth grade, in preparation of sixth grade. And then in seventh grade, they're gonna, they go into totally different kinds of teams. But throughout this whole process, one of the things we've been really trying hard to do is to have sequential, um, transitions. Right? So, that, that's been a, even from the music program, that's kind of what we, you know, that's how we laid it out. Um, so, I think, um, I think that's what we give you as an update now. So this'll get post, we're, as soon as we figure out how we're gonna do this. This'll get posted up, and then we'll continue to inform you, but we'll also continue to, you know, keep it up, keep it moving forward on the website, okay?
Great.
Big dog human group.
Yes. Margaret, thank you so much.
Margaret, thank you.
Margaret devotes a lot of time to this, I have to say, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, um, financial report.
There's a memo in your packet. Carol had asked me to investigate how other districts operate, uh, faculty daycares. So I sent out a, I th- I thought a lot of, um, communities would, um, contract out, um, with professional daycare places and just rent the space. Um, but the response to my, uh, listserv question was almost everybody that does it, does it themselves. So I did contact the lead teacher at the Ips- I contacted the business manager in the Ipswich Public Schools, got some information, um, had a- um, had a lengthy conversation with the, um, the lead teacher at the Ipswich Program, who gave me more details. I did get information from Randall, and, um, Amanda Harding reached out to the Arlington Public Schools. So, we do have a proposal for you to set up a faculty daycare in one of the empty kindergarten rooms, that is located near the preschool classroom. And, um, in the proposal, we've gone with, um, six fifty an hour would be the rate that would be charged the parent. Um, we'll take infants up to three, I think, I believe, three. Um, and we've proposed a sta- child-to-staff ratio of three to one for infants, four to one for toddlers, which is the early childhood, um, recoma- recommendation. We do not have to get licensed through the EEC, because we're located in a public school, and it's a public school program, but we would still be, um, following the guidelines, that, and, what they recommend. So, that was their recommendation, so, we projected at this point that we could perhaps, um, handle up to fifteen kids, uh, children, um, but I only projected the revenue out with twelve. Afraid to go too high with that, and then, uh, based upon the information I got from the other districts, um, it looked like they charge, or they pay sixteen fifty an hour, around that area for the lead teacher positions, and then the assistants make around twelve, twelve, uh, fifty an hour, so we went with twelve. Um, so the projected, uh, revenue after the expenses, our projected income would be around thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, so with the two, with the, um, four staff.
There would be one lead teacher and three assistants.
Yeah, so, would that be paying for their health insurance?
That's not included in that.
Not included in that number.
Okay.
If, if it's included in that number, we basically can't afford to run the program.
Right.
Unless we ran it with all part-time staff that were not benefited, which of course we would explore, but the reality of trying to find people, then, oh, who, you know.
Who don't need help.
Don't need help. Or maybe there's a happy medium, right, where you have a couple of.
So many hours.
Full-time, and then a couple of, because we have found that to be, like in our preschools, we have some assistants that are full-time, and then we have, uh, others that are part-time, so a teacher might have two part-time, uh, people, because that works for their schedule. So, we might be able to do something like that.
Is there, I know you said, and we were talking about before, there's, everyone kind of runs their own, and it seems like a lot of work for a pretty, it's a meaningful amount of revenue, but at the same time, it's a lot of work for not that much revenue. I guess my question is, do we need to follow everyone else's lead, or is there an opportunity for finding the contracted service?
We'd have to write a request for proposal and advertise it, um, and I'm not sure, um, what you'd find. I really don't have any information on that.
If we did do that route, are we stuck? If we didn't, like, whatever the RFPs came back with. Is it worth almost doing like a parallel? I'm just curious to see what, especially as we're talking about benefits, if we can avoid that, it seems like.
We could, it will take a little time, um, to put together an RFP for that, and then to advertise, I don't know when we'd have the information.
Okay, just my.
What, what if we didn't get twelve children, can we, like, av- advertise this program? And say that we, we wouldn't run it if we didn't get enough participation? You could open it up, other communities open it up to the town.
Or you could just have fewer staff.
Yeah.
I mean, that's another.
It all scales.
And you scale it up, yeah, scale it up or down. But we're gonna have a budget and finance subcommittee meeting next week, hopefully, so maybe we can, maybe we could explore that a little bit, like, what would it, you know, what would the process be about, how long would that take, you know? If you want it, cuz we, if we say we're gonna have one, then it really is a question, we, we still have time to figure out how we're gonna, put it together, right? But you'd have to, it would have to raise, raise more revenue than, than this, obviously.
To be worthwhile.
Be worthwhile, because otherwise, you, it, sometimes it is better to control your own destiny.
Right.
Right, um, but yeah, it's a fair question.
What's the minimum age that you'll take?
I don't think we've made that decision yet.
I think from what we read.
A teacher or?
I think, I think, I think people wanted sort of two to three months, you know, and most of the time you figure, maybe a mom has the opportunity to stay home for maybe two weeks, I'm trying to think like in a.
Oh, well, in the teacher's contract, in our teacher's contract, they stay, they can stay home up to eight weeks.
Paid.
Paid.
Yeah.
They can stay out twelve, a lot of them take twelve weeks, they just take four weeks unpaid.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it'd probably be, would be between three, uh, two and three months.
That's kinda what we were thinking.
And I assume we have like the proper insurance and everything.
I'd have to check with the town.
I'd have to check. That was something we talked about today, would we have to get additional insurance through the town?
Because of the age, or, I don't know.
Buy a lot of sanitizer.
There, there is a, there is a whole, um, piece on, um, the cleaning of childcare. It's different than public schools, um, I talked to Mike Anderson about it, we're already worried about that, but, um, there's a standard of how you have to sterilize at night, and, so there are a lot of things.
After every diaper.
Right.
Yeah.
Even the toys.
Yeah.
There was, uh, Heather was actually in my office when I was talking to Mike about it, and Heather worked in a daycare place, and she said, like, her main job was sterilizing the toys.
Oh, really?
At the end of the day, that was her job, sterilize all the toys. And they had to be dipped in bleach and.
The whole place is bleach every night.
Right, every night, right, so that's a concern for me, because we have our limited custodial staff.
Yeah, I mean, the floors, everything.
Everything, right, that's what I read, yeah.
Every day.
And you wouldn't wanna have any issues, so you'd have to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I think it's complicated to run your own, just, you know, I just remember when, you know, my son was in one, and just observing, it's pretty complicated, just about, you know, at that young age, um, you know, you have to bring in food up to a certain age.
Right.
And then at, at a certain age, you start providing it.
We would provide it at a certain age, right, but that's what I've found in all the programs is, when they're on baby food and formula, the parents bring it. But then when they get to a little bit older, and they're in sandwiches and stuff like that, it seemed like a lot of the programs provided it.
They did.
That's what it seemed like, I, you know.
Even with diapers.
Found that people had to bring their own.
More so, it's much fewer on the, like, the private side.
That would bring, that would, uh, provide.
That, that provide, yeah, it, it's the rare one that, that provides the food. Mine does, which is great.
Yeah, the one I do. Right down to diapers.
She eats very well, too.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. But it was.
She had pork roast for lunch today.
Right.
But that's the way they ran it, you know, you didn't have, you know, take the diaper option or the no diaper option.
And that's. And that's why I'm wondering, like, outsourcing it, rather than.
That was my first thought.
Just, it's, it's a huge learning curve to, to make.
We really don't have anybody that would run it.
Right.
Right now, because we don't have a principal, we won't have a principal at that building.
Although I just, I did get a resume of somebody that knew somebody, apparently, um, who had heard we were gonna be running a daycare, and, was very interested in having us look at their resume, so, you know, you won't know, if you do an RFP, you know, we, that's one way to go, and, if we go the other way, then we don't know till we advertise sort of what the, uh, what the option is there.
Can you do an RFI, just to get some information, or is that not allowed in?
I've never seen that in the, in the bidding, I mean, it has to go out to a public bid, so, I, I don't know about that, I'd probably have to ask.
It might just give you some preliminary information.
See if anybody's interested, right.
What does RFI stand for?
Request for Information.
Okay.
So, that's almost what you did on the, on the listserv.
But, but your, but your point is like, if, if it's a public bidding, there are certain, there are certain procedures you have to follow.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, I was surprised when it came back that they, almost everybody ran their own, I was like, wow.
Well, I've seen this kinda thing before, like, when we were, it wasn't this daycare issue, but it was, um, you know, looking at, like, even the roof, right? We, we had certain people that we, you know, requested information from them, sort of like Joan's done with these, three or four other places that run something similarly, you know, that's kinda how we got information, you know? But in terms of actually knowing who would be interested in maybe being hired, we probably would do that on a more formal, but otherwise, we don't wanna be accused of, you know, giving preference to somebody who might have been kind enough to give us some information, or has an inside track, you know? So, sometimes you have to just be, you know, you're kinda governed by some of that procedure, but, you know, we, we just, we know it's complicated, um, so, doesn't sound like anybody'd be willing to make, is ready to make a, you know, have a vote tonight, so, you know, perhaps, we have some more information that we can collect, my, my only worry at some point here is, you know, people are gonna make decisions. They probably already have made decisions about where their children are gonna go to daycare, so, you know, if this drags out until like April, May, you know, people might say, gee, I would have loved to do it, and then we won't get twelve people for sure. Um, but at the same time, we wanna do it right, you know, so we don't wanna rush something that might not be ready to go.
Hmm, I just, I just wanna understand this, though, about the, the health benefits again, because, uh, um, my understanding is if we, if we hire anybody new, we have to be prepared to pay for their health benefits, right?
That's what, that.
That's what we've been told.
From the budget, I mean, I don't know if it applies to, because I think, again, I don't know whether there's already some benefit packages that people, you know, that have already, the town already has, that, you know, we just, we don't know if the new people would take them. You know, maybe we would try to find a couple of part-time people that are not benefited, if we only had to worry about a couple that were, I mean.
That would be so hard to hi- I mean, you can't obviously hire someone that says, I don't want health benefits over.
No, 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 but if you said, we're looking for part-time people, you know, fifteen, fifteen hours a week.
Yeah.
Right, then people fly for that, you know?
This is different from how we operate now, because, um, we have the preschool revolving account, we not, we're not charging any benefits for those people. The benefit goes on the town, we don't pay the benefit for those people, so.
No, I know that.
So, this is different, like, I, I guess, it's like, since, since we were told if we added any new positions, we would have to, make the appropriate cut to offset that insurance, that's not how we've ever operated here.
Right.
So, we don't, I don't think we really know the answer, I think we can assume the answer, but we don't.
But that's what I'm saying, like, if.
We haven't asked the question, maybe because we don't wanna know the answer.
That sounds like a really critical question.
But if we go under the assumption, then these numbers don't work, so that's what I'm saying.
Don't work, actually.
Right, so, I'm just wondering, you know, if we, if, you know, I, I don't think anyone's ready to approve it tonight, but if we do go ahead and approve it, under that assumption, I think people would be scratching their head saying, well, their numbers don't work, so why would they?
We wouldn't, if we have to do the benefits, you know, for all of those people, we wouldn't be able to run it, we wouldn't, we just, we, we won't have a critical mass of people.
So, we really need to know whether that is a, a.
A fact.
Right.
That will be the way it will be going forward. And when we do, then we'll be in a better position to make a decision about this.
I think we also need to work through what the additional expenses are, cuz I gotta believe there's a long list of things, of things we're missing here.
Right.
Like, basically, the only expense we have here is just.
Is the salaries.
The salaries.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I think there's a, I think there's a lot more, just little things that you may need to do that you don't have to do for older children.
Yeah, well, furniture wouldn't be a problem.
Right, we have a lot at the school already.
And the, yeah, some toys wouldn't be a problem, we may have to buy some, but the thing, if you needed cribs, or, you know, strollers, those kinda things, there, there would be a.
And it's not like you can take in donations, cuz they have to be like.
Sterilized.
No, they have to be like, right, and, and, you know, and, and, I know, when I had my kids, the things are so different now, I'm like, I.
Yeah, the cribs have totally changed.
Well, I'm even thinking of what they, what they use when they take them outside, cuz, you know, you're not taking one or two children out.
Right.
Usually they take them in those.
Belts.
Big carriage. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
It's like a train, almost.
Yeah, but she's saying they only have four people, they take them out in cots, I've seen that.
Do you see them, right?
In Beverly, they're always walking.
Or they walk with a little, um, thing that's attached.
They're all attached to each other.
Oh, yeah, oh, I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right, and they're secured in.
But I know one of the, one of the ratio things is, like, in case of emergency thing, so that, that's why it's not.
Oh, they all have walkie-talkies, they have epi pens, it's like, that's what I'm saying, it's all those little things that start to add up, and there's, not a lot to play with.
No, I mean, some, well, I mean, obviously, we would have to find the money as startup, but the place I'd look would be the after-school program, revolving account, that's where I, that's where I'd look, because, you know, it's basically appropriate, I think, to, to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, it would, it would depend on exactly how much we needed, you know, and some things I would think would be provided by parents. You know, I mean, like you said, some of those things, definitely, we'd have to have, because it'd be a management function, but, the question is, you know.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, like, safety and security guidelines.
Yeah, yeah. The parents bring their child's stroller, and, you know, and, and have the staff use it, you know? Do parents, can parents provide a, port a crib, you know, as long as it meets certain criteria, that, that's, it sounds like that's what we are saying, is we have to research that, to know exactly what would fly.
And how do you, how do you feed all these children?
Yeah.
Those little tables with eight seats in them.
Well, I think, one of the things that Joan and I talked about, too, was actually going to Ipswich, to see their program in operation, and, um, you know, because that's how we would learn a lot.
Yeah.
You know, just to see it.
Is theirs in a school?
It's in the middle school.
It's in the middle school.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's on our plan.
I mean, I think, I think a staff daycare is a great idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
I just think it's, I just think it might be a lot more than what we're thinking, I would love to go and visit it.
Okay, well, we'll try, try to set up a time, and we'll have you come.
Okay.
Can visit more, they're fun.
So, we, so we can table that.
We're just gonna keep tabling it and see what.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll quickly go over, um, subcommittee reports, um, budget and finance, then, tonight, before the meeting.
Yeah, we just talked high level about, you know, really some of our challenges, and the things we need to still work on, and, wanna schedule a follow-up meeting, I don't think we really made any decisions tonight, it was.
Looks like we're just waiting for them to come to, to figure out where they are, to figure out where.
Right, yeah, to get like the real word.
Yeah.
Governance was supposed to meet tonight, but we bumped it, so that we could chat about budget and finance, so we need to be scheduled out.
Okay. Uh, negotiations is meeting, um, Monday. That's going well, uh, public relations.
We met, um, last week, right? And we decided we definitely wanna go forward with the, the let's speak, or the speak up, or the, whatever we're gonna call it.
The unnamed.
We got all kinds of names.
Yeah, um, and the goal is to have that in place by May, sometime in May. We, let's see, what else did we discuss?
Satisfaction.
Oh, the district satisfaction survey, yes, excellent, excellent job, so Michael is coming, has come up with a draft three, and Carol and I both made a few little suggestions, and so then the next draft will be prepared to, uh, show the school committee, show everyone here at the next meeting. And pending, you know, your suggestions and approval, then, that is something that we'd like to put forth for the parents of the community in May.
And hopefully, we, we, well, we would use the information in thinking about our strategicals going forward, cuz we've tried to line it up somewhat to the strategic plan.
Yes, yes.
And actually, Mi- we're gonna, Michael's gonna dump it in Survey Monkey, so we can, so we can look at how that format.
Yeah, so by next time, it'll actually be in kind of survey form to, it'll be takeable and.
Yeah.
Such.
Right, and we talked about the transition questions, and making sure that those.
Yes, yes, we discussed this.
Okay, uh, school building.
Uh, the school building committee, they had an emergency meeting last Tuesday, which I was unfortunately not able to be at, cuz we had another family commitment, but, um, I understood that they approved Russo, is that the right way to say? Russo Construction, that was the purpose of the meeting.
Okay.
To be the general contractor for the middle high school project.
Um, CPAC, so I wanted to ask about, do, do you, um, you know, I, I know we've been trying to get the CPAC, chair to come in annually, we're running out of meetings, so, would you like to, uh, have Shelby be invited to come?
Sure, absolutely, yes.
So, I'll, I'll.
I think she had a coffee tonight.
Wasn't there a coffee tonight?
She wants to come to the last meeting.
I had it on my calendar.
The last meeting in June, okay.
I didn't, I didn't see any information about that.
The last meeting in June.
Although, yeah, I remember, yeah, it was on the calendar, but I haven't heard anything about it, so I'm not really sure.
When, Laura?
Last meeting in June, the twenty-fifth.
Oh, great, okay.
Um, I do have, the next meeting schedule, it's scheduled is April second, seven to nine, that's for CPAC.
For CPAC.
Yeah, um, seven to nine P.M., it's called Ready for Life When the School Bus Stops Coming, um.
That's cool.
It's, um, it's a present, presentation of the arc of. It's um, it's a present, presentation of the Arc of Greater Haverhill Newburyport, and it's gonna be, provide an overview of employment. And day services, residential, independent living. Um, this meeting is going to be in Methuen. Right, there is more information about it that that's on the CPAC website, um, that's accessible through the school website. I also, I went to the Crest Board meeting, um, which was on March eighteenth. And uh Crest i- is um doing very well. We got our approved collaborative agreement in place. And we're one of the, out of twenty-six different collaboratives around the state, only eight, including us, now has an approved agreement. Which requires, you remember, our, this may approved everything. Took a while, but anyway, it's all, it's all set. Uh, they also presented the FY sixteen budget. And enrollment has increased from two hundred and twelve to two hundred and thirty-three. Um, with overall revenue increasing seven percent. Um, salaries went up four percent. Uh, apparently they did a survey and they found that they were. Nine percent paying, salaries nine percent below other school districts around, so they they increased it. Um, and the new building, the exciting news is that their new building at Nine Branch Street in Methuen is gonna be opening up. The same time that our new Penbrook is. Um, it's going to be housing pre-K through grade nine. Um, while ten through twelve will stay at the current campus in Methuen. That's about it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we got our um, the evaluation forms. Right, so we just have to get in touch with Laura to make appropriate times to um sit down with the superintendent.
Actually, I think everybody's got a time. I think I saw it on my calendar, right Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, thank you for promptly scheduling that, good job.
Um, we do have a second reading of uh policy, GCCD, domestic violence leave policy. That we um. Need to vote on. So the chairman entertained a motion to approve the new policy, GCCD, titled Domestic Violence Leave Policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we do have uh a PTA donation, generous PTA donation in the amount of a thousand dollars to be used for the Jump Up and Go program. Which I was happy to see that, because I did not think they were going to fund that, so that was very nice of them to find.
I think for this year they are, I think next year, that's a.
Yeah, well, that that was nice of them to put that um.
Yes, but that, they really use that in the morning. I know, gives them something to do.
Yeah, that's, yeah, cause the kids, there are a lot of kids that kept there early, so that was very nice of them.
Yes.
Um, so. Uh, motion is to accept the one thousand dollar donation from the Georgetown PTA to be used for. The Jump Up and Go program with gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tonight, we got some very generous donations between Mrs. Natoli and now the PTA, so. Um, we always appreciate the generosity of our community members. Um, so I think.
Can I just add one more thing? So the middle school track program has forty-four kids. So that's really a lot, yeah, that's really a lot for one coach, so uh Chris DeFranco. Um, is suggesting that we have a side letter uh to approve a stipend of a thousand dollars for a middle school assistant track coach. Um, and then that, there's enough money in the um. Fees that the, the user fees to be able to support that, so it won't cost us anything, yeah, exactly. So um, I just would ask that we consider um supporting that and then uh. Chris would find someone to do it. Forty-four kids, that middle school track program is always.
That is great.
You know, then, it it does, it definitely does.
Okay, um, the chairman entertained a motion to approve a stipend in the amount of one thousand dollars for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year. For a assistant coach for middle school track as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Barbie, thank you, everybody.
And can, can I just add something um about uh sports and athletics uh this morning, I'm, we. Chris DeFranco, um, and the athletic trainer and somebody else from Beverly, I think, I don't know. Uh, uh, we all met with Gerald McKeelop of Leahy Health Community Relations.
The donation?
Yes, yes, very generous man, and it it sounds like we're definitely going forward with this program, which is gonna be so fantastic. It's kind of based out of Beverly Hospital and the football players are all gonna be getting, I mean, it's a lot more than that, it has to do with the impact testing. And software and procedures and referrals to doctors, it's a very comprehensive program, I'm not doing it justice at all. Um, but, but the football players are gonna be receiving the five-star Zenith helmets that are been recommended and certified. By the Virginia Tech Institute of Safety, and the model school district around here that's been um. Using this program is Danvers, and so in twenty thirteen, the uh Danvers football team. The varsity team had nine concussions. Um, and then in twenty fourteen, and they didn't alter their practice procedures or anything at all, but they started using these concussions. And it went down to zero.
Wow, that's quite a difference.
It's not that, I mean, it does need to be stressed that helmets are not the whole answer, they're just one piece of the puzzle, but that is really just.
That's a dramatic, that sure is.
Hopeful, um.
Now, how many helmets are we getting?
Uh, enough for, now he didn't say, but he, enough for the team.
The entire, the entire, I mean, we have a lot of kids.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, I understand it's for the whole team.
Yeah, it's for the whole team.
Cause they don't share helmets.
Right.
Is that right, I wouldn't think they would.
To summon not others.
Right, well, that's what I was thinking too, and I'm like, oh, if somebody's not playing, they can take it off, but I would assume they can.
We can certainly ask Chris that question, but I thought that that's what he had said, that they were gonna outfit the team.
Pretty sure, yes.
Yeah, that is a very generous donation.
Helmets are not cheap.
I know.
And this, this whole program is, is basically, it's through Leahy Health, we're not paying for it, it's not at a cost to us.
And that was referred by a parent. I remember in the last, that was Mr.
Yep, it was um, yep, I see, I can see his face.
I can too, very, Meyer, Mr. Myers, yeah, which is, that was very nice of him, and his son is moving on. Yeah, he's gradu- he's graduating this year.
Graduated.
So I just find it amazing that like his child is leaving, but yet, you know, his interest is still with the program and with just protecting other kids, so.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
So and there will be a parent program that will, you know, tell parents in much greater detail than I'm sharing now about how this is all going to work and. It was just very exciting.
Yeah, that's nice.
Meeting, so, I wanted to mention that.
Great, well, thank you, thanks for mentioning that.
I just wanna make sure people don't, if they're interested, go to the gala, the G E F Gala, April eleventh. It's sparkle and shine, they're, they're changing the format up a little bit this year, not having a formal dinner, they're gonna be doing more pass orders and. Uh, you know, dancing and then they, but they will award all the G, the G E F grants, in fact, when I was talking to Stephanie, the Stephanie Thompson the other day. When she came to pick them up, I think there were like thirteen grant applications, which they were very happy with, obviously probably more requests than they have money, but they're. They have twenty-seven thousand dollars, I think, that they're gonna award, and then um, you know, I, the the partners in it, partner in education and the. And the golden apple, they're giving two golden apples to the teachers this year, so. I don't wanna say it publicly, because I don't know that they've told them yet, but uh.
I'm sure they're very deserving.
It's gonna be a lot of fun, so, you know, if you're interested in tickets, you can go online, they got a online registration, but. You know, I'd help you if you needed any help with that, but it it is a nice event and, and they put a lot of effort into it, it's like planning a wedding, you know, I mean, it's. You'd be surprised at the number of details and the number of people.
It's a lot of fun, it really is.
So that's April eleventh at the um, the Black Swan, nice, okay. Um, okay, I think that is it, the evening, there is no reason for an executive session tonight. So I will take roll call vote to adjourn the meeting at nine forty-five P M.
So moved.
Oh, we'll do a roll call, sorry.
Doesn't have to be a roll call, I can hear Laura saying.
Okay, so, did you say?
Second.
Second, Michael's second.
There's no discussion, correct? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Night.
We didn't have discussion or vote.
It's about adjourning, right?
Exactly.
How fun, okay.